Go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise, the invocation is going to be led by Reverend Susan Fennone with the Springs of Benita. Good evening.
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for watching over and protecting these council members and our mayor. Lord, lead them with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and good judgment. Help them to be in unity as they serve our community. And help them tonight as they look at the 2020 strategic priorities. And Lord, as businesses reopen in Benita Springs after this pandemic, may they not just survive, but thrive. And God, thank you for Benita Springs, a city with small-town charms in a big, bright future. Our peace of paradise, we call home. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Councilman Corey, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman Purdon. Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
President.
Councilman Forbes.
President.
Well, good evening, everybody. We're gonna, uh, we're starting back here, as you can see, socially distanced, but we are together, and that is nice after a month and a half online. And, um, we're gonna start tonight with public comments from members of the public. Hi, Al Greenwood, and we're gonna open this up to anything on the agenda at all for public comment. Please come in, because I know some of you are gonna make a comment and then leave, but welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Alfred Greenwood. I own the Buffalo Chips and beautiful downtown Benita. I wanna thank the two new council members. Uh, I appreciate you guys stepping up and, uh, serving, and I know you'll do it with pride and integrity, and thank you very much for, uh, coming aboard. Second thing, I wanna thank this city council, the mayor, for allowing the Benita Springs Lions Club to do a pancake breakfast on April the 11th. We gave away three pancakes, takeout only, and the, uh, public loved it. We gave away over a hundred pancake breakfasts on the 11th. The last three weeks, we've, uh, given away Harry Chapin food bundles, and we started that three weeks ago at your approval. And right now, uh, last Thursday, we gave away over four hundred cars came through, and most of the bundles will feed a family of four for a week. And I wanna thank you guys for allowing our Benita Springs Lions Club to be able to serve our community, and that's how we do it in Benita Springs. And thank you very much for letting us serve the public, and we're gonna do it tomorrow, and I think we'll have over four hundred cars. And, uh, thank you for allowing us to do that. The last thing I wanted to bring up again is about the mobile food vending carts. And with the present situation, it's become more critical for restaurants to try and stay open and stay in business. With this new coronavirus and the shutdown, every restaurant in Benita is gonna lose money this year. The only chance you have to make money in Benita is January, February, and March, and part of April. Well, we lost that. So I'm asking the city council, when that vote comes up for the vending carts, which I call hot dog carts, when it comes up, please postpone it until next May if you're gonna approve it, so that we, as restaurant owners, have a chance to get some of our money back if we're still open. January, February, and March is the only time you can make money in Benita in a restaurant. The rest of the time, you're lucky to break even. So I'm asking this city council to consider postponing the vote on the mobile food vending carts or put it off until next May, and I wanna thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Al. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll try not to touch anything. Uh, Mayor, council members, for the record, Dwight Estman, Paradise Road area, and I wanna address the bids that may have come in for the downtown development RFP that closes on May 14th. I'm reading this because some other people have asked to put their name on it. It makes no sense to open any proposals now during the worst financial crisis since the Great Depression. No developer is gonna pay what this land was worth, what it may be worth in a few months. Some may say the city needs the money, but it does not need the money right now. It would be foolish to sell at fire sale prices. Some may say, well, why not open the bids? See what someone's offering? Maybe some developer will make a great offer. But if the offer sounds too good to be true, it probably is. How can anyone, even CBRE, know what the market's gonna be like in a few months? And if you start negotiating with a buyer, they may back out for many reasons, including the lack of financing. It does not make sense for staff or the council to waste time reviewing the bids now. The records show that some council members have gotten campaign donations from developers, and those developers may want to buy at fire sale prices. Will those members feel pressure to accept bids that they would normally reject? What if all the proposals are rejected because they are not what the council wants? If none are chosen, then do all the bids become part of the public record? And when the bidding process is opened again after the economy has recovered, then other developers will know what has been previously proposed, which gives them an advantage. According to the RFP, it says, "Proposed, proposal responses received and opened will not be available to the public until after negotiation and award of the contract to the selected respondent or final cancellation of the RFP procurement." So the logical answer to my questions is to postpone opening the bids indefinitely until the COVID-19 pandemic is behind us and the economy is back on track. I hope that motion is made and it passes seven to zero. Other people who could not attend but agreed with this and wanted me to mention their names are Sandra and Tom Gibbons of Village Walk of Benita, Steve Riggs of Benita National, Linda Swartz of Cedar Creek. Couple further comments, and this is just me speaking. Even if their bids are rejected and not made part of the public record, how can we be sure that details wouldn't leak? Government is very well-known for leaking, and I'm not saying anybody would do it intentionally. Casual comment. Lastly, item 8C, since the owner of the property next door is considering developing the vacant land at some point in the future, why not see if he's interested in purchasing, purchasing this site? And ask CBRE if they think the current city hall is worth improving, or will a new owner tear it down and build new? Thank you for your time.
Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
It's great to see you. Wonderful to be here again. I have something to pass out to council if I could have somebody do that for me.
Meg, right behind you.
It's right behind you. Okay, thank you so much. I might need one for me, because I have extra copy for the, uh, staff and for the record, the clerk in the kitchen. Okay, but, um, that's, that's for my second comment. I wanna ditto what, um, Lion, Al Greenwood, owner of Buffalo Chips, said about, um, their terrific work over at Lions Club. Their motto is "We Serve," and they certainly do that. So ditto to Al, and ditto to what Al said about the food carts, because, man, these people are hurting, even at 25% and what you've done to permit them to be able to be outside, um, you know, to have a little leeway and outdoor dining, alfresco. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna be tough for them to make it. I'm, I'm so worried. We have so many great restaurants in town. Um, we have to do all we can to support our brick and mortar. Okay, um, and what Dwight said, ditto on Dwight. Uh, my family's been in real estate since 1958. Actually, my dad had a company on New York Stock Exchange, and, um, it is not the time to be selling or considering anything right now. We don't even know what the future's gonna be for, you know, the world, the country, our state, and our city, and what the economy's gonna do. And just as far as speculation, um, back before, um, they, they crashed in 2009, when everything went south, real estate prices went down, the economy was in the tank, um, we were considering, um, from 2006 on, something to do at this site, at, um, Bama Village, Imperial Landing, Imperial Crossing. Actually, when I first got on council, we put it out to bid. Antares Meehan came forward and was the winning bid. Um, then everything went bad. At that time, um, the company that did the prospectus on the, on, maybe Arlene remembers this, the prospectus on the site was RPMK, and they'd done pretty much a cookie cutter kind of prospectus, uh, on RFQ for a site in Newport Ritchie. Pretty much same thing, mixed use, downtown redevelopment project, trying to spur growth, and they did start the project there. And what happened is the project got partially built, and the developers left because the economy went south, and the city ended up having to bulldoze the darn thing, which didn't work out so well. So, um, please take it in consideration where we are right now. Everything is very doubtful, and yes, we have to make positive decisions, move things forward, but I think we have to be very careful. Okay, last but not least, because I wanna go home, gotta cook dinner, um, I passed something to you, um, that I'd like you to consider. Maybe a council member here can sponsor it for me, um, is a charter amendment for the November election. And basically, it's exactly the same thing that voters in Lee County and throughout the state adopted in, on November 6th, 2018. It was passed by 78% of the ballots that were cast in Lee County, and it's a proposal to, um, ethics and government. Now, tonight, I know, um, your city attorney is gonna be handing you a packet. Please read that, it's really important, keep yourself in line with all the, and I know you go to a, a, a group, um, training, uh, for ethics and government. You have to know. Back, I didn't, but I did. I would go to the Florida League of Cities Ethics Trainings, because you can really get yourself in some trouble. But essentially, in our city charter, in section 56, we have a code of ethics, but it's not very clear. Um, it's pretty, you know, vague about exactly what's allowable and what's not. Basically, that, you know, this is a public trust. You're sitting in a seat that is owned by the people in your districts or the cities throughout. It's not your seat. It's, you're serving on behalf of us, as you know, and, um, we want you to do everything possible in the best interest of the city. So I'm proposing that you put out a ballot amendment, um, that is almost identical to the Amendment 12, would have to be tweaked a little bit, but the ballot title would be lobbying and abuse of office by public officers, meaning you guys. So we have something about lobbying in our charter. Basically, you can't lobby city council two years after you leave. You can't. You have to, like, stay up, you know, you can't do that after you're out of council. But while you're on council, you can do lobbying. So what the amendment was for, um, Amendment 12 was for municipal, um, officers, special agencies.
One minute, Martha. One minute left.
Yeah, state legislators, judges even, that you can't lobby while you're serving in public office. Okay? So this is basically what this amendment would be to our city charter in section 56, Code of Ethics, and it just basically says it's, it's essential, um, in our Code of Ethics, to the proper conduct and operation of the city. By the way, we're in Massachusetts, glasses fogged up. Um, that the officers, employees of the city are independent and impartial, and, you know, it's pretty vague that way. So you see, what I've handed you, um, would basically, um, restrict your lobbying efforts after you get off the council of six years, like the state amendment did. It would restrict you from lobbying.
Thirty seconds.
Yes, while you're on the council, and it would, you know, prohibits the abuse of the public trust. So I would ask if any council member here would be willing to sponsor this, um, to bring it up for a draft at the next, uh, council meeting. Not tonight, can't vote on it, can't do that, but I'd like to hear if somebody would, and I'd be happy to work with you. This doesn't mean you can't do sales or marketing or promotion. It's specific to lobbying.
Thank you, Martha. Thanks for being with us, councilwoman.
Appreciate it.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Other members of the public? No? Seeing none? Okay, we're gonna move on, and, uh...
Just one moment.
Yes.
I'd like to make sure that there's no, no one on the call as well.
Okay.
Addison, do we have anyone on a call for public comment? Is there anyone on a call for public comment?
Could I get one clarification from the public?
Meg, sorry. Meg just...
As a matter of fact, we do not.
Okay. No, Mayor, we're, we're, I'm sorry, you had a question.
Okay, so, uh, first, I wanted to apologize to everyone. I had, uh, somebody very close to me that had a baby, and I was...
There's no one else for public comment.
Uh, second, I was walking down in the tail end of Desmond speaking, and when he was talking about holding up RFP, was he talking RFPs in general, or was he talking about the, specific to the property we're discussing today?
I believe he mentioned specific to the property.
So he's not saying hold all RFPs? He's saying hold this one that we're about to talk about with them?
Specifically, he had, he had, my notes indicated he had two major points. The first point was that he was concerned in the current, um, economic situation, even a responsive bidder may not be able to perform ultimately, and he was concerned that accepting and opening the packets now would make them available to the public, which would give future bidder, uh, the possibility of having advantage. So I think what he was recommending is to reject all bids, not to open them and send them back.
So we're not even gonna look at the bids at all?
That's his recommendation.
That's one person's opinion.
Well, no.
We are the city council.
I just wanted to clarify.
We will decide, and there was three or four people that signed their names to it.
Specifically to that one, or if it was to all of them? So that's, that was my clarification.
Okay, our, thank you, Jesse. Arlene, anything else before we get started? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure? We have pulled item A, which was to approve a letter to support the distribution for the federal fiscal year 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program Funds, and we just wanna leave it at that, or do we wanna offer an explanation?
So we do have a council member who would like some further clarification from Lee County Sheriff's Office on that, so at this time, we're gonna pull it and discuss further before we bring back.
Great.
I'd also like to pull items B and C.
B and C for discussion? Okay. Great, um...
I'll move to approve the rest.
Oh, nothing serious.
There is nothing else, so.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Fred. Item B, Councilman Corey.
Is, is Ann here?
Yes, she is, sir.
I, I went over the, uh, the CIP list, uh, that Ann prepared, and, uh, wanted to confirm my understanding as a new councilman, uh, that the, uh, what's on the CIP list is actually funded, uh, except for any grant monies that may be, uh, needed to complete the projects. Now, when I say funded, it's funded to the extent that the cost is in the approved budget from last year, including the amount carried forward from the prior year. It may not mean that the final cost is known. For example, uh, costs associated with the acquisition of Benita Country Club property, the costs associated with the quadrant plan and so forth. But, uh, one of the things that is, concerns me is we have a large amount of carryover from the FY19 budget into FY20. We've had $3 million or so of expenditures, uh, during this FY year, FY20, and I'm just wondering if there are projects that we can get started, put people to work. Uh, there's about, I think it's 47 million or 49 million, or I have the figures right in front of me, uh, of, of projects in the, in the budget, uh, $45,886 of, of unexpendable budget variance. Now, some of that, I know we can't do anything about it at the present time, like the quadrant plan or, or the, or the Benita Springs Country Club property, but we do have a number of capital projects, uh, baseball complex, master plan, pool plan, so forth and so on, and I'm just wondering, is there a way that we can move those projects up to help stimulate the, the economy in Benita Springs since, I think, other than the two that identified, most of these other projects are funded already? Uh, and if I remember right, the total carried forward from, uh, 2019 was 20 million, so of that probably five or six million, except for the Country Club and the Quadrant Plan, it is being carried forward into this year, so why can't we go ahead and get those things started, put people to work, get the multiplier effect of money flowing into the economy now? So I wanted to raise that question.
Who wants to address that?
I was gonna add on to that question.
Sure, and then Amy. Jesse and then Amy.
What was, if he's correct, I kinda like where he's going with it, but I'm just, for clarification purposes, when I was reading it, it looked to me as if some of those projects were not yet fully funded. Like, so it would probably be good to find that out, but I, if you are correct and they are fully funded, I like the mindset that you're going with, but I, clarification on that, I think, is important.
My understanding is that except for grant monies that may be needed, everything else is funded out of the prior budgets or out of the current year budgets.
I can think of one off the top of my head I know isn't, like, the wall on, on Terry, West Wall, like, it's only partially funded. That's like one example, but I'm, and that's just off the top of my head, so I'm sure there's others.
Right, there's, there are those that don't have a final cost yet, and they couldn't be started if you want, but what I'm trying to do is get to a list of what could be started and when can we start.
I think what Councilman Corey's also, but some of them are pre, we, we have engineering and design to do, which doesn't give you the final cost of the entire project, but there are pre-funded funds, for example, for a phase one part, portion of it.
We, I, I'd like to hear from Matt, like, what are actually shovel-ready, and even though I think trying to stimulate the Benita Springs economy is a good one, unless we earmark the construction to be Benita Springs Companies, we're not gonna be stimulating our economy, we're gonna be stimulating others' economy, uh, because it's, we're not gonna, the contractors are not gonna be coming from Benita Springs for most of these things, because they're big commercial construction people. But, you know, I think we should, if we have shovel-ready, I, my, let him speak, because he knows better than I, I don't think most of these are ready to be done.
Okay, Matt?
Uh, so there's a couple of ways I can do this. I'm trying to figure out what's the least confusing. There, there is a suite of projects that are definitely, um, really about a month away from being shovel-ready, and I can go over those real quickly and then kinda methodically go through the list, or I can, you know, try and go through the list quickly and then get to those and explain where the funding is available and where the funding shortfalls might be. Um, however you would prefer, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Chris, what do you prefer, honestly?
Just give us an oversight. I don't know that we have to go project by project.
Okay.
But it would be nice to know what could we, what, what could we get started in the next month or so? What could we get started by September 30th at the end of this quarter?
Maybe you could review with them the ones we just discussed that were, that are getting ready to be shovel-ready.
So, so if you, if you focus on, um, most of the, the things that are shovel-ready, or they're really about a month away, we're, we're developing bid specs for one, which means it's just about shovel-ready. We're at final approvals on the other two, and they'll be shovel-ready within a month and a half. They're sidewalk or multi-use path projects, and so they are in the budget in a couple of ways in the CIP. The approach, their primary funding source comes out of line at, um, 3250-541-6320, which is at the bottom of the first page of the Capitol Report, and it's titled "Multi-Use Pathways and Sidewalks." And there's about two point, really $2.3 million available currently. The projects that are gonna become ready in the next month or so are Benita Drive Multi-Use Pathway, which is a, uh, eight and 10-foot-wide multi-use path on the south side of Benita Drive. The design is final. He is literally drafting up the, the bid specifications so that we can go out to bid, probably later on this month. Um, Maddox Lane Sidewalk is right behind it. That is about 1,200-foot, eight-foot-wide sidewalk on the south side of Maddox Lane connects Cockle Shell, um, Cockle Shell Drive to Paradise Drive. It will, it will be available for construction here at some, or for bidding in, in the next month or so. Cockle Shell Drive, there's an extent, there's a sidewalk along Cockle Shell, um, but it's falls short of connecting to Shangri-La Drive, so we have 100% plans on that project, and it's just, it's ready to basically go out to bid. And those three projects total around $2.1 million. So I mentioned that the primary funding source is out of this line at a multi-use pathways. So what, what we would do is ask council for a budget transfer for that money to, to come out, and then they would be able to construct.
To clarify, just would the, the connect of Cockle Shell and Paradise, that's a separate one from the Maddox Lane?
Yes. So, so what, what those two, if, if you do both of those in unison, what it creates is, um, and I don't, it's probably a mile or more, connective loop.
Yeah, no, I know exactly.
From Cockle Shell over across Maddox, where there is no sidewalk, and then down Paradise, and then you could connect along, um, Shangri-La Road. There's a third one that is just kinda right behind those three in terms of timing. It's, it's maybe, maybe two months from now. It's, it's just a little more complicated, and it is Imperial Shores Drive. It runs from Benita Beach Road, it's about an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, uh, runs from Benita Beach Road north to Tarpon Avenue, which has a sidewalk. It's a major east-west road that kinda parallels Beach Road. It goes in front, if you're familiar with the, um, American Legion, that goes in front of there. All of these projects include drainage, because they're all basically having to deal with open swale systems, having to cover the swale system to get the, uh, you know, the necessary area to build the sidewalk. If we add that one into the mix, uh, really the need is somewhere around $2, $2.9 million based on engineering estimates. So there's a little bit of a shortfall. Right now, you've got about $2.3 million available. I think the shortfall's really about $513,000, but please don't hold me to that, uh, that is not in this current year's budget. So, you know, I was starting to put together a budget to, to fill that shortfall and be able to produce it, but those are all really essentially shovel-ready, um, sidewalk, really more multi-use path-type projects for city council to consider. Yes.
So if we, those first three, with those first three, we don't even go over? So we could do all three of those, and we did not go over?
Those are estimates. It'll depend, it'll depend on what, when we go out to bid, what actually comes back. You won't be far off of those ranges, you know, if we're, if we're fortunate, uh, you know, maybe folks will price work a little cheaper, and we'll, uh, we won't have that shortfall. Now, knowing that there's about 500,000 gap in the suite of four projects, you know, you're probably not gonna make that up in, in this differential, but... The, the bidding process for the new council people, as we go out to bid, those are larger projects, they, they will be out on the street, as we call it, for about a month. So, you know, if the bid documents start really kicking out some point in the next two to three weeks, uh, you know, they'll basically be out on the street part of May, most of June, and then back in front of you for, for consideration and award at some point in, probably late July. So they won't really start until the early fall.
I'm sorry, my understa, I don't understand how the preferred vendors work in regards to, like, construction projects. So if it goes out to bid, that's to anybody, but like, what do, how do, how do our preferred city vendors play into that? Like, how, how does that work?
Um, these, these are, they're already designed, and so, you know, typically, we go out for a hard bid, uh, and anybody that, that's qualified, they have to write licensing, can participate. You do have another, um, contract delivery mechanism that we did pre-negotiate with several, um, design builders, and so, you know, it is conceivable on some of these projects, if you wanted to consider, you could, um, turn to them and get a price directly for the project, and if, you know, council was comfortable with that price, you could just move straight to contracting.
I think, I think maybe the other part of, uh, Councilmember Purdon's question is that our local preference for things that are priced bids, if the local vendor... our local preference for things that are priced bids, if the local vendor is within 10% of the price, then they get bumped forward.
That's true. That is correct.
Matt, wouldn't in the present low economic downturn, by the time we'd be bidding these, we shouldn't get better than normal prices, shouldn't we?
I'm an optimist. You know, I don't, the construction market has been strong. It will really probably depend on, you know, what the effects are or are not of, you know, the Corona pandemic. I don't wish anyone, I worked in contracting during the downturn of 2007, '08, '09, '10. I don't wish anyone to have to price work that way. So, I'm not going to wish that on anyone, but it could be possible that we get more favorable pricing.
In my observation, things that are already under contract are moving, but not new starts and sales of homes, all kinds of stuff is slowing down. So I think you probably get better figures.
I just have one question. Do you think the pace of this is like, normal? Or do you think we're being slow with these projects, or is it just a normal?
No, some of these, I mentioned, actually, the design was turned around really quick. Some of them are a little slower. I mentioned the drainage. Anytime we have to put drainage pipe in the ground, we're occupying the same space that our water and sewer utility can be in, our telecommunications folks. But I mentioned Imperial Shores, that's a tricky one for BSU. They know that, we're in coordination with them. So those are the things that can kind of slow down as your engineer and their engineer try to figure out the best way to make use of the existing right-of-way you have. Benita Drive, we really didn't have those conflicts, and so the design of that went actually really quickly. So there are, across the spectrum.
So with some of these other projects that we've been carrying over from one year to the other, could you summarize why we haven't made more progress with them?
Okay, so, for example, the best example of that would be the Benita Beach Road US-41 Quadrant. We were in an active lawsuit up until February of 2019. The settlement agreement, which is a structured agreement, it has pieces for the private property owner to execute, and then that triggers steps on the city's part. That was not actually inked until, I believe, August of 2019. So, you know, we had been stockpiling what we estimated right-of-way acquisition and construction cross for the northwest quadrant road would be. I think we're in a good place, budgetarily speaking, as far as that goes, on both accounts. We did acquire the right-of-way on the northeast quadrant, so that, you know, we could build a roadway in the future to the northeast. But truly, you know, the first need is really the northwest, where we were in the active lawsuit. So, you know, that's something that was beyond our control. We're fortunate to have the agreement, but it's a structured agreement. You know, it's a if-then clause, a giant if-then clause. So it has to work through it. I know Derek's been involved as recently as a couple of weeks ago, you know, trying to work, keep that thing moving along. And I know the owner is excited about it too, but it's complicated.
But doesn't that have to go through the state, the state?
The best way to look at that is you have two parallel tracks at this point. You have a city-initiated tract that may or may not dovetail with the state's outcome. And then you have the state's partnership with the city that can either endorse the work that we continue to work on, or come up with new ideas that augment, supplement, you know, the city's approach. This has been, from the, from the city's perspective, an exercise in securing rights of way. And to that end, you own the northeast. We actually entered into a small settlement on the southeast. And then you have this structured agreement on the northwest that we're working to, that would lead to the city owning the right-of-way. At that point, you could decide to, you know, work with this, see if the state will work with you to build the road, or build the road to supplement what the state comes up with through their PD&E process. I think you have a lot of flexibility, is what I'm trying to get towards. You know, the LMS projects, the two that we have on, LMS are the FEMA grants that we have under contract, or the ones that are under contract are under a two-step type contract. So the first phase is really only for design work and cost-benefit analysis to prove that the design is beneficial. And that is out on the street. It's actually due back June 2nd for both of them. That's Spring Creek, which is commonly referred Spring Creek. Benita Springs Golf Course Flood Improvement Project, that's what we call the golf course. And then Logan Regional Flowway Drainage Project. So, you know, there'll be a selection process for designers as we come into the summer. And really, the only available dollars to spend there are the city's portion of the match and what the feds allocated for design dollars. It's not the full 9.9 million. Assuming those designs are cost-beneficial, then there'll be a secondary contract that will come from FEMA that will allow for the other components of the project. Most notably there, we do know, you know, with the golf course, that there probably is additional dollars, you know, necessary to really complete that project and complete the acquisition process. So even though FEMA is going to give us, you know, the better part of seven and a half million bucks, we know that there's still a differential there. Pine Lake Preserve, we keep working through the LMS process. We also have a, another iron in the
Do you need to go into all these, Chris? Did you get your questions answered?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is have Matt pull together a report for the next council meeting, sort of laying out what projects he anticipates will be bid and underway by September 30th.
I just named them.
All right, and those three?
It was those, it was those three and four.
What about all the little projects under the fifth strategic priority?
Under the fifth?
On page three, I guess it is, yeah.
Most of those are really, fall in, within the parks and rec realm, and I'm not fully familiar with where everything is. I can tell you that halfway down the page, the Bandshell Resod was approved at the last city council meeting. Obviously, you know, the re-sodding will wait until the water restrictions are lifted so that we can water that sod in. The buffer wall really, truly, probably needs some additional dollars. I've drafted up a draft CIP item for you to consider in your capital improvement planning for next year, so that's not really sitting on the hopper for this year.
Can we just pull together whatever's under your responsibility, what's under parks, and try to come up with an overall?
Sure, sure.
Maybe we could do a green sheet on what it would look like if we decided to vote on these three projects that are ready to go? I mean
I mean, those have already been priorities. It's why they're under design.
They're approved if they're
We've already approved, if they're approved, that we have direction to keep moving forward. We already, we're already in the bid process for that.
I think the short answer is you're not, they're not going to go any faster. So the question is, is there anything right behind those that can?
None of this stuff could really be executed.
I think what we'd like to do is bring back to you
So maybe the parks.
The budget transfers that Matt mentioned for the next meeting. We also, we're going to go through each, we're going to re-go through the priorities and the transportation priority, because we've previously done the stormwater priority. We'd like to go through the transportation priorities with you. And then some of you all have received input from residents that you'd like, that they'd like to see projects that we don't even have on the list yet. So I know the mayor's had meetings, Councilmember Carr has had meetings, I know, Jesse, you've had some outreach from folks. So probably, you know, begin to reprioritize those. And at the same time, we can have Nicole prioritize hers that are as close to shovel-ready as possible.
The short answer, Councilman Corey, is the list of things that can move is really that suite of sidewalk projects. Behind it is the underground electric, the final step of underground electric for the Benita Springs downtown. Beyond that, as Arlene mentioned, there's been a large suite of projects that are basically queued up for Council's consideration to go into the design phase and funding for next year's CIP. And they're pretty sizable. I just turned a bunch of them over to Ann and probably broke the budget in my request.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Okay, and item C, Councilman Corey? Oh, yeah, do we want to accept A and B? Or do we, why don't we just do them all at the end? We'll do them all together. How's that? Item C?
I had asked Ann for the timing of the principal payments on the debt for FY '21, '22, and '23. The debt payments due for FY '21 have been made, is that correct, Ann?
For 2020 have been made.
Yeah, they've been made in 20, for 2020. Yeah, I'm getting my fiscal years to be, FY '20 have been made. So one of the things that I was looking at over this, this week, was the yield on 10-year Treasuries. Today, it closed at about 0.7%. Apple announced two days ago, if you talk about a company that doesn't need any money, they're going out with $88 billion worth of bonds maturing between 10 and 30 years. Single A to AAA municipal rates are somewhere 1.5% to 2%. So it occurred to me that there's maybe a good time to look at our long-term debt obligations and see if we could pick up some additional debt at a very, very cheap rate. Now, I understand in looking at the CAFR that there's a breakage fee or a prepayment penalty associated with the current debt with Bank of America. Maybe that, that would be, so we may not want to necessarily pay off that debt with new debt, but we've got some issues, I think. You know, we can, as I understand, we can only use about $5 million of FEMA money to acquire Benita Country Club. The rest of the money has to go to actual infrastructure. There's probably going to be a shortfall then with the money to do the purchase price of about $5 million. There's probably some other uses. We could fund up the reserve for hurricane damages, or to a level that we had prior to Irma. Other uses we could have with the money. And I'm not saying it's what we need to do, but I would like to have us agree that we could bring our financial consultant in to talk to us about what the market looks like. Is this a good time for us to be thinking about this? What do we need to look for in the long run, the rest of the year? What's the market look like? And it's, you know, there was an additional $20 million, I mean, $20 million unemployed reported today. We've got unemployment now topping $30 million. The Fed has opened up its window, basically buy municipal bonds. And, you know, so there might be another market if we put some debt together, the Federal Reserve might just buy it directly. So I would just suggest that it might be a good time that we get our financial consultant in, at least get up to speed on it, and see if it might be something we want to look at over the course of the summer.
Can I ask a question? Are you, is this because you're seeing the potential of what's out here and you're thinking that we might be able to capitalize on the opportunity? Or are you, are you seeing something based on the performance of what we currently have that you're not pleased with?
No, what we have is, is not bad. It was, I think it was probably well-negotiated. I think Bank of America stepped up. And it may be that the simplest thing to do is to go back to them and say, "Look, we paid down this debt. What would you do if we expanded the amount of debt? What could you do for us?" I mean, we credit enhanced it a bunch because we pledged all sorts of revenue streams for it. We gave them a breakage fee. So, you know, they might be inclined to work with us on it. Or there might be other sources. You know, Raymond James does this out of St. Petersburg. RBC does it out of St. Petersburg. There's other markets. All I'm seeing is an opportunity to get some cheap money. And whether or not we, you know, we may need it, because there may be shortfall in taxes at the end of the year, if people start not being able to pay their mortgages and they're not being able to afford to pay their property taxes and so forth. All I'm saying is it might be a time to at least take a look at it.
Okay, any further discussion? Or Ann, do you have anything?
No, I think we're, that would work fine for us to move forward and have our financial advisor address the current market and what the opportunities are, if that's Council's pleasure.
I think this will become really relevant when we start our budget process, which we're doing shortly. And
Our budget workshops, for sure.
Our budget workshops, because we're going to have to protect, project our revenues. And currently, we do have our emergency funds fully funded, so it's not like we're below what we're supposed to be. And I think there are two issues. One, do we want to refinance that one debt instrument? I forgot when it ends, but one, we're going to, one is going to be paid off in two years, so it doesn't make sense to refinance that one. But the other one that's longer, that's a whole different issue, whether it would be profitable or financially efficient to do that. So, but whether we want to borrow, we're going to, in my view, for some of these projects, particularly the one you mentioned, we probably, we're going to have to borrow for that. But before we start talking about numbers, I think we want to negotiate, we're so far away from getting a price there. And I don't think we should be talking about extra funds other than the $5 million that's in that, the grant. That's, that's all we should focus on. We still have to get a price there.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that's why we would do it. I'm just suggesting there may be buckets of needs that would, say, it might be a good idea to just look at the market.
No, we have to look, we've had that before. It's very useful and illuminating to see what it's done, so. But we should probably do it with the budget, I think, so we could understand what our choices are. I think we're going to have to be making choices at that time.
And with the golf course, we can't get ahead and buy it early. With the grant, we can't own it and get the grant.
Correct, correct.
So we can't go too quickly on that.
So we have to, that's still in process, as we say, like so many of these other things, which we fully support, and we know that we're going to have to pony up for it. And we don't have a reserve to pay for those kinds of things. The reasonable thing is that we're going to have to borrow. Hopefully, the rates will still stay, I think they'll still stay low for a while, so we have some time.
So maybe I can suggest that we start to look at a workshop schedule leading in. I know we'll do that, but
Yes, we're planning to bring the budget workshop to you to the next meeting.
Okay, and we'll lay out a schedule. That's great. Chris, very good points, good discussion, everybody.
Should we move to accept?
Yeah, should we, motion to accept? B and C?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve B and C. In a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on now to proclamations and presentations. Item A is an update from CBRE on the status of Imperial Crossing. And this is green sheet 20-05-108. Welcome, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor. We have on the agenda for you, we have members of CBRE to just walk us through the process, where we've come and how we are, and then the next steps following May 14.
Okay, great, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leanne Corst, and I'm responsible for CBRE's Southeast Region Government Practice. Most of you, we've met previously, but for those two new councilmembers, CB, for your benefit, CBRE is the largest commercial real estate firm in the world. And Mike McShay, my colleague, has joined us from San Diego. And Mike is responsible for our national, or our National Public Sector Practice. And Jeff Gage has also joined us, and Jeff is based in southwest Florida and understands the local market dynamics. So what we thought we would do for you today is just a quick recap. For many of you, the information will be redundant, but we thought it was good for the two new councilmembers to hear from us directly a little bit about the background. So we'll be brief in that recap. But effectively, CBRE was hired as the city's real estate advisor in September of last year, specifically for the Imperial Crossing opportunity. And we, everyone referred to it previously as the former Bamboo Parcel. And we thought that name didn't quite do it justice. And so we took an opportunity to look at the history of the site and the proximity to the Imperial River, Tanyan East Rail, Railroad, et cetera, and rebranded it with the city and city council's approval, Imperial Crossing. In October, two neighboring city-owned parcels were added to our scope to to accomplish a couple of different things: create critical mass, critical mass, accretive development, and monetize those city assets as well. So, after that, our real work began, and we prepared marketing materials, a website, brochure, and used CBRE's proprietary tools to very broadly market the property. Over 23,000 email recipients received the distribution. And through that process, we, we have reports that come out and allow folks like Jeff and Mike and I to follow up on, on leads. But more than 9,400 recipients viewed the marketing materials, including 169 internationally. And to date, 87 recipients have downloaded the project materials. So, we've been pleased with the response to the marketing materials. The RFP itself was actually released on January 16. A pre-proposal conference was held February 5. And as some of your, your guests and public speakers commented, the bids are due next week on, on May 14. So, that's a, that's a quick recap. I'll, I'll stop there to see if anyone has any questions about the process that we undertook to date. And from there, Mike will talk about market conditions. But if you all have any questions about the process, we're happy to entertain those.
Counsel, any questions at this point?
Could you give us the numbers again from the marketing side? And then additionally, what your thoughts are on what we're looking at on the 14th? Are we going to be looking at five? Are we going to be looking at 400?
So, the statistics again, were more than 23,000 recipients received the marketing materials. More than 9,400 viewed them, including 169 internationally. And 87 recipients downloaded the project materials. In terms of what we're going to receive next week, we, you know, at this point, we don't know. We're subject to a cone of silence currently, so we're not allowed to speak to the bidders. We follow the city's same public procurement process. So, we rely on market, or the marketing statistics that I just shared to gauge interest, but we truly don't know until those bids come in. And of course, we do have the pandemic that may impact interest and capital markets, which may be a good segue into market conditions, which Mike's going to talk about.
Sure. Thank you, Leanne. So, let me just tell you broadly, you know, across the United States, you know, CBRE-
Sorry, what was your name again?
Mike.
Mike?
Mike McShay. Thanks, Mike.
Sure. So, we see, you know, projects, and we have inside of the public sector projects like this all across the United States. And there's no doubt that COVID is going to have some impact. Having said that, many of your peer group that are in the middle of projects like this are choosing to just stay the course. Go ahead and allow the respondents to come in because, you know, we are all optimistic that we are going to get past the epidemic, the pandemic. And when that happens, you know, it's going to take some time for developers to ramp up and to actually, you know, get designs completed, price construction, you know, all of the things that need to go into a, a major development such as we're talking about. So, you know, our advice today is to stay the course. See what happens, you know, next week when the proposals do come in. And you have some options available to you. The option is, you know, do nothing, you know, and, and, you know, shelve the bids for now. You know, or we could be very pleasantly surprised. The market has changed. You know, I, just a couple of things have happened. You know, I would tell you that the capital markets, as Leanne mentioned, have frozen a little bit. They're not as liquid as they were. Hotel development has come to a standstill at the moment because many people are going to be looking at, maybe buying distressed hotels right now. That said, there's a significant need for housing. And, and retail, while it's changing, and it's going to be less about brick and mortar and more about internet sales, the kind of retail that's envisioned for this project is exactly the kind of lifestyle retail that is going to take hold and is going to do well in the future. So, you know, I'm bullish about, I'm very, very optimistic about the number of people that have looked at the response, that have downloaded the RFPs. As Leanne mentioned, it's too early to say. We can't predict how many people are going to be willing to respond. But I don't think you lose anything by going ahead and staying the course today and opening the bids, see how they look. And then you can make some decisions at that point with more information that you're disposed of. I'm going to stop there.
I would just also add to that, that, you know, CBRE as a global firm pays very close attention to market research and economics and has a whole team of economic advisors that is, that are publishing reports. And so, some of the sort of high-level findings and, and data that we see come across our desk, Jeff, Mike and I, is that there is a strong multifamily recovery projected for the fourth quarter. Of course, right now, there, you know, there's, there's some dips in, dips in rental rates and increases in vacancy, but those are expected to rise in the, in the third quarter of 2020. And the, the statistics and the timeline sort of match up well with the fact that Imperial Crossing, if we receive bids that you all like and want to entertain, it'll take a couple of months to negotiate, choose, evaluate and choose, and negotiate development agreement. And construction likely wouldn't start until the, the beginning of 2021. So, as we see the company project recovery, it, it sort of matches up to what the timeline could be for this bid. So, you know, right now, as Mike said, we're seeing the public sector utilizing under, taking advantage of underutilized assets for revenue generation and economic development operations. So, so our recommendations for next steps are to receive, as Mike said, receive the bids, analyze the bids. And what we will do throughout that process is we will work with your procurement team and Arlene and Carly and, and the city staff to ensure compliance with the RFP requirements. We'll put together a matrix that helps compare any bids that are received in a light, kind manner. We'll perform financial analysis. We'll conduct developer interviews. And we'll fully vet any of the responses that come in. And, you know, I, I heard the public commentary and just want to mention that there are safeguards that can be put in place in the development agreement: clawback provisions and penalties for long performance. If there are bids that the city likes and wants to deal with, those are options to protect the city and protect the city's business and take back the property if the developer doesn't perform. And then you will have a team of, CBRE doesn't evaluate. We help analyze the bid and provide information. But then, a team of city staff will complete the evaluation and the scoring and bring the recommended award back to city council for consideration and approval and, and bring things along the way. So-
You know, I have one comment I just wanted to add, and that is, you know, one of the councilmembers mentioned economic development and stimulus from the local community. You know, if this project goes forward and you do select somebody, what better project than to stimulate downtown, get jobs going in the local community than this project? You know, so that is one of the things that's been a big consideration in some of our other cities, is that they are looking, okay, how do we put people back to work? And this is one of those projects that may be able to be done.
Counsel, any questions at this point?
Well, and, and to his point, it's not just the people that'll be working there. They're going to eat lunch and they have other things to do, so they'll be spending money in the city, even, even if the company that's building it isn't a Benita, you know, company. So, it's going, it would help out the community, so.
No, that, that's great. Chris, do you have something?
I'm just wondering, what's the forecast for the increase in unoccupied retail as businesses start to be unable to continue or go bankrupt? One of my concerns is that the available retail space in the market is going to increase, and it could be such that the available space is cheaper than any new space as landlords take on the, the ability, whatever they've got to do to attract tenants in order to make mortgage payments and other commitments. So, are you seeing a trend in terms of yet, are you seeing a trend in terms of the availability of retail space?
Can I just interject?
Who?
Mike.
Sorry.
I think, Mike, you and Leanne pointed out earlier that Imperial Crossings is unique in that it's sort of specially designed not to be a big, big store, big brick and mortar. It's kind of little itty-bitty places that are all combined together. And it's a different setting, and it's one that might very much appeal in the future. So, let's just, I think, be optimistic and just wait and see. I mean, we can't predict what's going to happen with, you know, Coconut Point and, and, you know, Coastland Mall. You know, all that is just up in the air. So, let's just take it a day and move forward. And I think it is a unique property that people might very much be interested in developing and going forward. So.
My question's on the table. I'd like for you to respond.
I, I think I heard the question about, did you want me to respond to the question about retail? Is that, is that what you were asking?
Especially with respect to small retailers that aren't in the, in the malls that are operating out of small retail shops that are at the most risk in this economy.
Right. So, so retail's changing. There's no, no way around that, you know? And small retailers are at risk. But I will tell you, I'm working on a very, very large project in Honolulu right now. And where malls are closing and some of the retail is, is not being supported, the lifestyle retail, which is what we're thinking of along the riverfront, you know, in my view, is going to take off. It's going to do well. And that's just going to do nothing but really support the other retail in and around the community, if one reason another can't be on the riverfront, you know? So, I think I want to be optimistic and, and know that, you know, all boats will rise with the rising tide. And you have the chance to do that with a really special development on the riverfront. And that's, you know, that's why we're interested in CBRE in helping you get through this process. And I think it's why we had so many people take a look at the, you know, the RFP documents.
I'll just add, if you're looking for statistics, you can go to our website, And there's a lot of reports in all the different sectors: multifamily, retail. And that'll give you the data that I think you're looking for.
Thank you.
Fred, did you have a question?
No. The only thing, I think that we've yet to see the worst to come from the economy and the impact of it. It's just started. A lot of businesses that should be able to get government money have not been able to get it because the big guys got in, and it's, it's really not, not as, I don't view it as optimistic. I, I pray you're right, but I don't think you are.
Well, I'll, I'll dive in here, and I think you guys have done an amazing job. We've had great enthusiasm in the community. But I think what we need to do, obviously, is, I, I'm going to strongly advocate that we move forward, see what we get, and then have you guys come back and make a, you know, give us what we, the information that we have for updates, Arlene.
So, Mayor, just to, to walk you through a little bit, so we do have the, the deadline, May 14. At that point, CBRE will be assisting us. We'll also distribute the applicants in, in the cone of silence to Dr. Banyan, to DPZ, and then to, to staff. We'll be, staff will be receiving feedback from our consultants on this. Of course, the voting members that would be recommending the vote to you will be staff members. So, we're, we're working through that. It'll be three or five staff members, depending on the applications we receive. Then we'll have, in the helps with CBRE, we'll have a recommendation to counsel. We are suggesting a little bit, it's, it's not a requirement of the procurement process, but previously, we would, we would list the names of the applicants. In talking with CBRE and talking with Derek, it's not a requirement, so it, it sometimes complicates the issue with the names being out there for the media to contact them. We're going to suggest we leave that out of, keep the confidentiality of the companies as well. We'll inform you how many we receive. And then through the process, CBRE will work with us to do one-on-one consultations with counsel so we can walk through each of the applications we receive. So, you're prepared of the process as we go along.
No. Absolutely keep the media out of it. They have no role in the process, as far as I'm concerned.
Would we, would it be public information how many bids we got on the 14th?
Yes. We would, we would display, we would give the information of how many we received. And that's it. We would not name them or their corporation name or their address, which is, you all are mostly familiar with. That's the process. We normally only name the name and address of the, the bids that are received in a timely manner on the due, due date. It is not a requirement of the procurement policy to do that. And in talking with our consultants, it is, it helps keep the, the process a little bit smoother if, if that's not released.
No, that's great. Is there anybody here that's opposed to moving forward?
Well, I have a couple more questions.
Sure, Amy, please.
I'm not opposed at all.
Yeah.
In similar situations, if there is such a thing, how many bids would you expect to come out of 87 downloads?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. And I, I'm going to pass off to Leanne, but I'll always-
Like on Twitter with college recruiting, right? How many of the coaches are looking versus responding? I'm, I'm in that world right now. So, thank you.
You know, we would normally, in a process like this, hope for anywhere between three to five to seven. We write these RFPs so that we don't get every unqualified party that's interested. So, we write the RFP with financial and experiential requirements to show that they have the past performance to perform a development of this size and of this nature. So, you know, we ideally don't want 30 bids. We want three to five to seven really good qualified bids. We went through this process in Mobile, Alabama, for a 22-acre site in downtown, and we received five. We shortlisted to three. And so, that, in, in my view, is an ideal sort of situation. Of, of course, competition is good, but it's more important to have us to have good quality bids and developers than it is to have volume.
So, what, but-
I think it was COVID. So, I'm just going to say, I think the wild-
Right.
The wild card is COVID. You know, a lot of people have not been able to get together with their architects and their financiers and things like that in the way that they normally do it. And so, it's a wild card, you know? But we have options in front of us if we don't get the response that we hoped for. All we can say right now is just we're very, very encouraged by the amount of people that have been looking.
But what options do we have if we have a negative response?
I can help a little bit. So, so if we do not have any respondents, we can, you can all move forward with re-advertising, and you can set that forward. If we go through the process and there's concern, I just want to clarify to you, the cone of silence lasts 30 days from the decision-making process. So, should you select a respondent, there is no public records available till 30 days after that. If you go through the process and you decide that none of the respondents are how you'd like to move forward, I'll let Derek verify, but you can, you can dismiss the respondents with the ability to re-advertise that. And it does not open up the, the, the public record at that point either. So, those, those folks-
What did you, what did you just say? I'm sorry.
Let me try and make it English. If, if, if we get a disappointing showing, and the intent of the city council is to immediately rebid, maybe, actually, the bid, the process was pretty wide open. But, so, it's not like you're going to change the standards. But if you want to give more time or something for things to work out, and we're going to immediately rebid, we, we could continue to keep those records sealed because they're basically continuing the process. If, however, this is going to be a thing where we're going to say, well, let's bid it next year, then those records would become public. So, you know, the public- So, you know, the public has the right to inspect the records before final decisions are made. So, if we're talking about, you know, what Mr. Esmond said earlier, he was saying, well, reject everything and just rebid it later on or something to that extent. So that there's no prejudice to those people who did bid. But, you know, if we decide to go ahead and with the opening, then we can always say, we don't have to sell the property. You don't, I mean, that's always the choice. If the correct project is not in front of you, you could always send it out, you can make that a decision.
So, if we don't like what we receive and we say we're gonna rebid, how soon do we have to rebid to keep that cone of silence going on? And what defines rebidding?
It'll depend on, on the circumstances of what we're looking at. If we're changing, if you're changing the RFP significantly, then they would still become available.
No, no, no.
You're talking about saying, look, we didn't get anything interesting, you know, we're just starting to climb out of this, we think there may be more interest. Because even though it was, it opened in January, it closed in May during sort of the height of this, and we're gonna give it out for 60 more days. We're even gonna give the possibility of the people who did bid more time to refine their product, then, then it would stay closed. But, because you're not reaching any final decisions. In, in many ways, it's like the way you've addressed when you acquire property. When you're acquiring property, your negotiations, your appraisals, everything is sealed until you're moving to the final leg of the, of the process. It's designed to protect us.
Okay, what about, we decide we're gonna hold off on the bids and we're gonna rebid it? Do we still pay CBRE, what, $7,500 a month? Or can we, can we have it out for bid but not have a recurring cost of $7,500?
I think our contract was for as long as this process goes on.
Our, our current contract is with.
So then the definition of keeping it open bidding is to keep CBRE involved in the process?
That, that would be staff's recommendation because of their ability to.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the concerns of, that were raised by Dwight and Fran, and others about the silence. You know, not revealing what others have bid. If we say we're gonna go forward, but we realize, given what we know in a month, that it's gonna take a while for the economy to kind of get out its glitches. Do we still have to pay them to keep the cone of silence?
To keep the cone of silence?
Well, you know, not to reveal what the bids were.
Well, they're not gonna do it.
It's not related, is it? No, I, I, I think what our, our contract is with CBRE, they're, they're not voting on the, on the.
I know that, I know that, but, but the concerns of the people were that information could get out that could be biased, you know, in another's favor, on someone else's back, right? That's basically, and so, what I'm, what keeps, you said, we can just say the bid is open? So that we, we were not accepting, but people can resubmit and there's a new timeframe of, of.
If, if, if you wait a year, and I think the statutory language actually is a year. If you reject all bids and say we're, but publish at the same time, notice of intent to rebid.
Mm-hmm, we have a year.
You can wait a year without anything becoming public.
Perfect.
That, that's, that's the, that's the long window of what you'd be looking for.
Thank you.
And the deadline again for the bids is?
The 14th.
The 14th, okay, so we've got another. Fred?
Well, I have, I, I have this comment. I think if, when we get the bids, if we don't have more than at least two to three that, that look good, then we're, we're in a problem. We don't want to get down where we only have one qualified bidder on the Big Bamboo Village or Imperial Crossing. It's not a good position.
It's the right one, I'll take it.
Exactly, exactly.
You only need one.
No, if you do, eventually they'll know they're the only one and they, it can be more difficult to get around.
Well, yeah, now, now, real quick, and we've doomed and gloomed this quite a bit, we can continue down this path. Why don't you, like I said, give us a little, you've given us some reality, but rather than the doom and gloom, let's wait till the 14th and see what reality is. But, but to that end, do you have any thoughts along those lines? That's not doom and gloom, that's not pie in the sky, but straight down the middle reality at this point?
I'd direct their answer.
Right?
Well, I'd like to hear their answer, but not direct it.
I think you guys are optimistic. They're looking at us like, what more do you want us to say? They think that this could be a winner. They believed it in the beginning and continue to believe in it.
I'd like to hear from.
Yeah, no, I'd like to hear from them and then Jesse and then Amy.
I'd like to hear from Jeff, Jeffrey, who's the local.
Who Jeff is local, yes.
He's a local person, could you just give us an overview of what, you know, other projects or what the situation here is in Florida? Is he on?
Sure. Predominantly, construction that is underway is ongoing. A lot of the trades have pulled back a little bit just to honor the separation. So, you may not have plumbers and electricians working on sites at the same time, but construction's moving forward just at a slower pace. And that's because, you know, those projects are funded, they've got schedules they need to meet and, you know, there's no turning back now. You know, the climate going forward is really a function of a bunch of things. You know, with this project, we're contemplating a lot of multifamily, there's a direct relationship between job growth and the demand for multifamily. We don't know what that's gonna be. To a certain extent, it's dependent on how fast the hospitality industry comes back and what it looks like. So, you know, we're optimistic. Mike brought out a, a point that I think is worthy of mention. I was on a call the other day with just retail specialists in the food and beverage industry. And larger restaurants have bigger overheads, as you can imagine. So, the suggestion of many was that restaurants are gonna start cutting their dining room sizes and becoming much more boutique in nature. Which I can't see anybody in the audience, so I don't know who was saying it, but someone brought the point up that, you know, what we're looking for in this, in this development is smaller restaurants, destination-type locations. This is not gonna be a large steakhouse that's gonna have parking for 300 people and, and a big, you know, open buffet area. This is gonna be a, a mom-and-pop environment. And those will come back sooner. I, I hope I answered your question.
Jeff, I would just also add that Mike and I are involved in two other city development projects in Florida that are moving forward right now. The developer, they, they're not under construction, they're still in the design and planning stages, but they are moving, moving forward. So, we are realistic, but we are optimistic.
Thank you. Jesse, did you have something in that, Amy?
I, I hear Councilman Forbes' concerns about financial uncertainty, but I don't think that we can operate under fear and pull the brakes now. We're this far into the process. Hey, they aren't cheap, you guys know you're not cheap. We've come this far, we're two weeks from seeing what we can get. Look, if it's a dud, we'll discuss our relationship, but if it's not, I'd like to at least see what we have. So, as one of the new council people, I would like to see what's under the hood, open these things up, and, and then at least see, see what we're potentially looking at. Because this is so far down the road, to say, you know, financially, we may or may not be able to do this, with the criteria being as strong as it is, for people to be able to apply for this project. I think we need to weigh this out and not, and not pull bait right now, we've come this far. So, I appreciate what you're doing and I'm looking forward to seeing the next phases of it. Thank you.
Amy, did you have something?
No.
No, anybody else? Uh, Chris?
I, I have to sort of agree with Fred that we need to, I don't want to be the guy with doom and gloom. But I would be surprised if we get bids that come in that are anywhere close to what we think is reasonable. And I think we need to, to prepare ourselves a plan B as to what, as to what's gonna happen going forward.
Chris, I appreciate that and I'll just remind everybody that for several years now, this property has generated zero in income. So, with that in mind, unless there's other questions, I'll bid each one of you a good evening and thank you for the information. And we look forward to the next steps, because we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Wonderful.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the good news is if we get all horrible bids, we can just not pick it.
Exactly.
Right, yeah, it's up to us, absolutely what we want to do.
We have a bailout position.
Right, so we're gonna move on now to mayor and council member items. Item A is a discussion and implementation of a distinguished, distinguished public service award program. This is Councilman Pardon, green sheet 20-05-101.
Okay, this is my second green sheet, so I'm kind of excited about this. And this is essentially a way that we as a body can recognize people who do exceptional things in Bonita. Through the COVID-19 crisis, we've all seen, you know, people in our fire department, people in our Lee County Sheriff Department, staff members. And, and community members who are really stepping up to the plate and doing things for the city. So, kind of channeling my inner Janet Martin from back in the day in District 2 with something feel-good. This could be a great opportunity for us on a regular basis to start recognizing some of the Bonita superstars who are in our community, who don't, who don't generally get the recognition that they deserve. So, I would appreciate your support and consideration on this green sheet item, thank you.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea and public service, obviously, you're thinking the Lee County Sheriff's.
Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, staff. And then also, there's something in there for all, all members, if you have somebody in the community who did something awesome. Like, for example, remember a couple of years ago when the soccer league won the states? You know, may, maybe you make the coach or maybe you make the team that month. Or what, if it's somebody from Bonita who does something noteworthy on a state, national level or something like that, you know, we have the ability to say, hey, make it the head coach of the football team. Hey, make it, you know, make it Chief DeWitt. Whatever the deal is, we have the ability to kind of just recognize people who have done awesome things in Bonita on a regular basis. And then it kind of gives everybody a chance to go around and recognize people in their district who might be doing something awesome, so, and staff members too.
Conceptually, it, it sounds, it's, I mean, who, who would vote against not recognizing people that have done something? But I think the process is important if we're gonna go forward with this. The frequency that was mentioned in here on a monthly basis, I think, is way too much. I just want to know how you find these people or how you offer them up and, and what kind of screening, there has to be some kind of screening. Or, or do we each get our favorite person to come forward and do it, which I'm, I'm not sure I'm really in favor of that. But I think we need to develop a process, so I don't know if you want to throw it back to the staff? I don't know if we've done this in the past, I don't, or to, to, to do it so that it would be fair and that we don't hurt anybody's feelings. But I don't think it should be so frequent that it, it's meaningless. You know, because we give, we give the presentation to the, you know, the recognition in here. And again, the criterion of what kinds of services that we want to recognize in the city, I think it needs a little thought.
And who gets to decide?
Let me kind of run through how we started this. Okay, so the first person that is, is, that is in mind is somebody who is a, let's just say they are a very notable community member who has survived COVID-19. So, to me, it was an optimistic message of a Bonita Springs citizen who was active in the community that overcame the very same thing that's plaguing our city. So, it was an optimistic type thing. Then, I talked to the Sheriff's Department. And, you know, upon talking to the Sheriff's Department, you know, and like, hey, you know, maybe the, they have people, you know, within their organization that they feel that have done great things. Same thing with DeWitt, same thing with Arlene. So, there's excellent things that are happening within our, within our ranks and we have a large enough pool between the Leos and the Fire Department and our staff to tell a story of somebody who's making great things happen in Bonita. For example, the woman who's gotten us, what, $29 million in grants? That's not even something we've ever done as a city. Is that recognizable? In my opinion, it absolutely is. So, to me, I don't see any point in making something overly bureaucratic. It's an award, if you want somebody to get the award, apply and, and then we can keep going. But I mean, it doesn't need to, we're saying thank you to people who are doing great things for the city, it doesn't need a, a thesis and a study group.
I just, I don't support it because, one, I, I don't think our community is being devastated by COVID-19. I think it's being devastated by shutdown and not being able to open and get our hair cut. But anyway, and it's problematic and, and who gets to decide who's a hero or who did something extraordinary? And I see us as a community working together during this time. It's horrible, but, you know, it's, it's more of a team than let's, let's pick this person, let's pick that, and then we get to pick our favorites. It doesn't, we, I don't know, the mayor honored, I don't remember his name, but we met him together and he introduced himself as Monkey Man. The mayor very quickly said, how about today we call you Dean, Mayor of Dean Street? Go yell and the mayor, Monkey Man! So, he was the dean, the mayor of Dean Street and then we, 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 we honored him. We gave him a plaque, he came in, he was thrilled, he was happy. I'm not, you know, I mean, we can discuss if that's how we want to do it, but that's something that stood out. I mean, he was, he really was an exceptional, you know, community member for that community that day. And it was very apparent, but this is so diverse. I mean, you know, the, the restaurant that gives away its whole supply of food, do we, do we honor them and give them gratitude? I think that how we show our gratitude is, well, I always appreciate our firefighters and our sheriff's officers, but, you know, and, and even the people in the stores. People are telling me that, that customers are getting very hostile and negative and so, just be nice. I mean, I don't know if we have to institutionalize something that then becomes, oh yeah, it's another one of these, oh yeah, you got that, oh yeah. It doesn't seem special. The, the presentation we did.
I don't know what's not special, we've never even done it.
Yeah, but it doesn't seem like we need to do it right now. I, I think that it's, we should stay focused on what's in front of us.
It's in front of us and I wrote it and I thought about it and it's in front of us, no vote, that's fine, let's just keep moving.
No, 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 I, look, I, I think this, I think a lot of people that are out there working would, could use some recognition. Whether they want to accept the award or like the idea that they were thought of or mentioned. I think there's a lot of people out there right now, especially the past month and a half, doing, doing a lot for this community and I, I, I for one support the idea.
There's a guy that, Al Greenwood, what he did.
Yeah, could we, could we, yes, what the lines, but could we integrate this with our regular citations or?
I purposely did it separate so that it wasn't caught in the minutia of the beginning of the meeting. I want it to be something special at the end, so that, I, I want it to be an actual recognition, I don't want it to be caught up in the consent agenda portion.
It's not the consent agenda.
It's not the, no, we have, we have.
The formality and the thing is makes it not special, was my point. I specifically wanted it at the, at the end of the.
I, I, I kind of agree with Amy as far as the, how often we do it. Monthly, I think, might be a little too much. So, maybe quarterly, yeah, ju- just so that way. And, and I think you kind of need like a selection committee, because obviously, we can't all discuss it unless we talk at all our meetings to figure out who it is and then it's all open. So, it'd be better if there was like a smaller, you know, group, either, you know, staff members or, or, you know, however you want to set it up. But no, I think it's a great idea.
Have nominations from, ask the public to nominate people or something?
Well, I, I, I think that has to be worked out. I mean, if, if it's like, if, if we, if we want to recognize somebody that we think's above and beyond, we can, you know, submit it to the selection committee and they, they could figure out. Because if, if we all discuss it, then it's all public and, and, you know, like you said, you don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. But I, I kind of disagree with doing it at the end of the meeting, just because some of our meetings run so long. You don't, so, you know, when, when, when we do the presentations, that's kind of like the ideal time to really do it, so. Because we, we don't want to, you know, we're honoring them, but then making them sit here for four or five hours, maybe sometimes seven hours.
It gets you about 11:30. Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Maybe we could get something different, I mean, somebody should work on, this is why I think Sam could use their.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Get something other than the plaque, you know, something different from what we do for the other things. I don't know, maybe a medal or something, I don't know.
Yeah, with a little medal.
Why don't we come up with some ideas? I, I think quarterly is, is good and some mechanism by which.
Could decide who gets it.
Somebody could decide who gets it and what we're trying to, what exactly we're trying to.
And, and of course, the first one, we don't have to wait a whole three months, you know, quarter to do it, so that.
Well, let's get the process and then we'll, we'll get our first person, whoever it is, and give them something other than the plaque so it distinguishes from the rest. I mean, that's the direction I thought would be good, but I, I would rely on the staff to, because they're better at it than we are.
I, I agree with what Mike's saying, I'd like to, to do one other thing. Either we maybe give more than one award at a time, because I don't think, think there's different categories. Like what Al Greenwood and they did, that's for free, volunteer, other people are being. Other people are being paid to do jobs, and they do it exceptional, especially the people who help get those grants. So I think you all want to look at recognizing both kind of sectors, public, private, volunteer.
And that's why I have it, I wrote it so that it would be completely open to people who are citizens of Bonita, who are part of the Sheriff's Department, who are part of the city staff, and who are part of the Fire Department. So I mean, it's.
Jesse, would you be open to doing it quarterly?
I'm amenable to quarterly. But I mean, I would like to get moving on it, and I don't want to make this kind, I don't want this to drag out for two months. I would, I just want to get, I mean, if they can get us something that is going to be, hey, here's the criteria, and we'll put three or four staff members on it, and you submit it, then fine. But I just, this is, this is too, this isn't the type of thing that needs to be. We have enough stuff that can, bureaucratically, we can beat to death. This is supposed to be a feel-good sticker for a citizen of Bonita who did something. That's it, that's all it is. There's nothing else behind it. We don't have to make it any simpler, any more complex than that. So if we can move forward in an expeditious way, I'm amenable to all of those things.
May I just add that I'd actually, if anything, just delay it so that we don't put more burden on staff? I mean, I'm sure you noted the overtime in the most recent paper, budget report. So the staff is doing so much. I mean, just for this meeting, we had to set up outside. And so now they have to present something that is worked out, that involves, you know.
We could have voted on it today, and it would have been done. I mean, you're the one who's asking if this goes around for another month and a half.
No, 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 I said I didn't support it. So I was explaining my position.
And I understand city staff. I'm at city hall every single day. Five days a week I'm here. So I understand what the city staff's doing. And I talk to Arlene, and I talk to Derek probably more than they care for. So you don't have to explain those things to them. Thank you.
But if you're open to quarterly, if that's okay with you, then I'd make a motion to approve this quarterly. So I'm making a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second?
Ma'am, just add that we have some kind of input from the staff. And I'm sorry if it takes too much time for them to do it. But even for Arlene to think about it a little bit, or someone that she refers to, about the process. Because I don't understand how we're going to select these people. You know, and who's going to be making that selection. We need at least that structure. You can't just say, I'm going to decide who we're going to make feel good for the day. That's not going to work, you know.
So.
So put some provision that we have some input from the staff and go forward and gear up.
I am confident that if this passes, Jesse and Arlene and Laura, Matt, whomever can get that.
Well, I think, what are we voting on? Just that we go ahead with some award that will be defined later? Or why don't we wait for the guideline and the definition of what it is that we're rewarding? So that it's ironed out, and it's not a flippant, like, I want to make, you know, Ralph feel good today, so he's going to get an award tonight. So let's just think it through.
Well, we've often just given direction to the staff without having it well-defined. And I think that's, can we put that in the minutes? I mean, because we can't, Laura's right, we don't have a specific thing to vote on. But we could give them direction to facilitate this within the guidelines of what Jesse has suggested, quarterly, and figure out some way how we select the people. That's basically all they have to do.
Thank you, Amy. So with that in mind, would you like a vote or just a direction to do this? To figure out some of the parameters?
Well, I think what Councilwoman Carum is asking is, she's indicating she would support the quarterly, but she would like that the motion maker and the seconder add a component, that staff come up with some kind of.
Oh, I'm fine with that, yes. I'm absolutely fine.
Then I think you can proceed forward with the vote.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Chris? No?
Well, I might make a suggestion that why don't we go down the path of trying to identify somebody that would be a great recipient of the award by August 31st?
Okay.
And Jesse can work with staff. Staff can probably work out something in terms of the criteria. And based upon what all takes place with that initial award, then we can sort of memorialize it in terms of what the council wants to do going forward based upon that experience, as opposed to trying to, you know, define the criteria now, define what staff's role is, define all the various areas that we're going to look at. I would just suggest let's work towards a selection by a given date. See what happens, see what the process, how it involves, and then we can memorialize it later.
That's a good fact. Agreeable to all of that. Okay. Wonderful. Any further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes. Councilwoman Carumba.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. Item B is direct staff to proceed with developing and advertising a request for qualifications in RFQ for grant writing and grant support continuing services. I brought this item up, and this is green sheet 20-05-107. And I've had several conversations with Arlene and Matt, and Derek, I think, has been involved in some of them. And, you know, we've got this $29 million in grant money, which is fabulous. But I explained it this way to staff, where, you know, this is fabulous. This is more than we've ever had. We're in fifth gear, we're going down the highway 100 miles an hour, and we've got the 29 million. I said, that's wonderful, but I don't want to shift into neutral and let our foot off the gas. So the discussion ensued, I said, what I want to do is I want to step on the gas and hit the rocket boosters and find out what money, what other money is out there. So with that discussion, I said to Arlene and Matt, what does that look like? What do we need to do to take these next steps? So, Arlene, is that teeing it up? So can you kind of explain?
So what we discussed is we do have the ability to, we have Ellie working on the procurement of grants. But as we move into the LMS process and into some of these grants that we're getting contracts on, we also need to be overseeing the implementation of those grants and bids and projects. So the mayor was addressing that, do we have the resources to continue to push out on the grants and continue to cast our net out to keep seeing what's coming in? What this would be is direction from council to draft an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. And we would recommend that it be similar to other continuing contracts that you have where you allow, there are many grant writing services, many consultants that do that, that you cast a net of qualifications, have them pre-qualified and enter into negotiations. And then staff would have the resources at that point that should have grant appeal to the council and staff. And maybe that corporation has more experience, like, for example, with the Tiger Grants, we worked with Alta, or a separate transportation grant, that they could use that continuing contract to get the resources they need. Some of these grants, you have to prepare a cost-benefit analysis, a financial backing. The other item is, is those folks who pre-qualify, maybe there's a segment of the LMS grant or an existing grant that we have that our staff could utilize services and helping in the implementation because these grants do provide administrative services also. We would absolutely recommend that they qualify under all the current federal guidelines for grant writing, grant procurement, and grant administration. And there's a whole set of guidelines for that that we would write into the RFP so that should they be selected, they already meet the criteria for reimbursement for the grants. So some of the grant preparation, if you don't have the grant, and currently there's a cost to that, and that's something we would have to bring forward with each grant if there was a cost for that consultant. And, but also if we had procured the grant and we were working through administration, there might be costs that are covered through the grant that are reimbursable to us also.
And I just want, you know, and it's master of the obvious, you've heard me say that before. But our citizens have already paid this money, right? It's either in Washington or in Tallahassee. We're just, yeah, we're just politely, professionally going to apply a little more pressure that we want to, that we want to get it some more.
I like the idea, I mean, I'm, when I first got on, when I first got on the council, we did not have a grant writer. We did not. And I think we hired Ellie.
And she's done a wonderful job, fabulous job.
She's done an incredible job.
Incredible job.
I've had a long conversation with Arlene and Derek about this. When we were talking about something else, we got onto this thing. And I think she, I want her to still be in that position of directing these things. But because these grants that we've already gotten have to be administered, and a lot of them are just like the design, it's like the first step. There's another step that you have to go through to apply for the second step. So there's all kinds of follow-up administrative things in order to use the money that we've already gotten. So we need to continue that process. I really like, Arlene explained this whole thing to me on the phone. So I understand where we could have all these specialty kinds of services that are related to grant writing. So as we need this kind of service, we could tap it. And it wouldn't be like they're not, it's not a new person, a new hire. It's a contract to do specialty services. So I think it would be really good, so I'd be in favor of it. And we would pre-qualify all these things, and as an as-needed basis, we could call them in to go forward and to continue to apply to the grants and then to execute the ones we have. I think it's something that we need, and because there's a lot of pressure to do the job.
And 29 million is a great start. It's a fabulous start, but it's not enough.
And a lot of them are CIPs, so you see where we are. We have a million projects that we've got to work on. So, and to get that money, we have to move it along.
And we've discussed previously with council, this would be a step in the process. We do also have these larger grants that will have, that will need regular assistance on, that we were going to come back to you on, some contract employees for, that only run with the existence of the grant. More resources we're going to need as we move forward. But this would be another set of resources for the staff.
So it looks like you just talked about, you use the same.
We could utilize.
List for the ones.
And also, there would be an opportunity for new future grants that come out.
I don't see staff recommendation.
Well, because it's a request, you would have to, it would be.
Oh, because the mayor requested it? I got it.
Chris, anybody else?
It's always been my experience working with universities that some of the most important people in the various departments are the ones that can write grant requests. And a good grant writer pays for themselves many times over. So I would be supportive of the whole idea.
Mike, do you have anything?
No, I think it sounds good. I was just worried that we were losing Ellie or something.
No, no, no. Not to take on Ellie, but she's done a fabulous job, but I think she can use some help, is the bottom line. So with that, I'll make, I brought it up, so I'll make a motion to approve and accept. And there's been multiple seconds.
So we don't have to vote.
Yeah, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr. Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba.
Aye.
Councilman Purden.
Great. Thanks, everybody. I think we're going to be happy. So thank you very much. Item C is discuss the developer's agreement for property 91612 and 9... I don't think that's quite right. I think that, ooh, Rooney, typo. Is it 9161 and 9171? Arlene?
Yes, 9171, 9162, and 9171.
Poor Derek, he gets picked on even though he didn't type it. But we are, but for clarification.
That's all I needed.
9161 and 9171, Bonita Beach Road, which is obviously, if you pull out of City Hall here. Yeah, immediately, immediately east of City Hall. And this is Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson, green sheet 20-05-109. Mike?
Yeah, I brought this forward basically because the developer next door was asking if we would consider doing a developer's agreement on the properties instead of having to go through a full plan development. Because there are some specific issues there with vegetation that they'd like to keep some, what, xerex scrub or something? I don't know how to, the first word, xerex.
The expertise, but yes.
But there's some unique properties to, the two adjacent properties to us that they would like to kind of get in agreement with us ahead of time on how to go about that, combine the preserve area all on one property instead of having to have it on both properties. And then there's also some options that could help us out with City Hall, with them being right next door as far as having some access to be able to get to the light at Spanish Wells and things like that, so.
Would that create some additional parking?
They have mentioned that, like, evening meetings, things like that, there might be some overflow parking instead of the post office having to yell at us all the time.
Yes, my initial concern with, not, I don't want, I don't want to say concern, that's an overstatement. My initial was, I know that, I mean, the lane used to turn on this, she's good at what she does, she doesn't give things away. So I talked to Dolma earlier, and essentially I was like, look, she's good. She's not agreeing to make this a preserve because she wants to do something nice. Not that she isn't nice, but, I mean, they're getting something out of it.
Everything's always given, taken.
So I wanted to understand procedurally what that changed moving forward. So I asked John that, and he gave me a very good explanation that made me feel comfortable. So if you guys are even-minded, similar to how I am, always think the worst and hope for the best kind of scenario, John had a pretty good explanation for that, and I felt more comfortable. So maybe if you can.
Jesse, I'm with you. I had to save conversation.
And I believe Wayne Arnold's here to speak more on it.
Why don't we let John speak, and then we'll.
I just have a question, though. This suggestion to use, whatever this is called, developer's agreement, is a suggestion coming from the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Just as a real quick walkthrough and explanation, this is a very unique assemblage of property. You have three parcels, and within those three parcels, part of them is divided by a right-of-way, and one of the parcels is already developed. There are some things that the property owner would like to do, to bring unified business in one location. That is something that we've looked for and actually have pushed for in the past with other places. And there's also some unique characteristics of the property, not only in terms of vegetation, but also the fact that it's right next to City Hall, which could possibly provide us additional access points for entrance and exit to Spanish Wells Boulevard and the light there, depending on how things work out. So there's some, there's some issues that I think this developer's agreement will allow us to work out. There's some things the developers looking for, there's some things the city's looking for. And this might be the vehicle that gets us there. So whatever you decide to do, if you decide to send this forward, you're still going to get another look at this when whatever agreement is put together comes before you. If this was something that you were expected to vote on blind and hope things worked out for the best, I would never recommend this path. However, even if you say yes tonight, it's going to come back to you for your blessing. So if it doesn't look good, if things didn't work out, or for some reason there were issues that we couldn't come to a resolution on, you don't have to approve it. So this is only authorization for us to start discussions and negotiations with the property owner. Ma'am?
I have a lot of questions. First of all, what kind of restrictions or what kind of things can we put into this agreement besides saying that you can look at them together?
Well, what this, what this agreement hopefully can do is provide clarification for both the city and the property owner, and answering a lot of these questions. One, they're, they need a certain amount of space and square footage for them to build and locate all of their employees here. So that would be one of the things that I think that they would probably be asking for, not to put words in their mouth. The things that we would be asking for would be, would be design-related, both in terms of how the buildings would be oriented, but also where those buildings would be built and how it would be set up. I've talked to all of you about some of the environmental concerns that we have. It is one of the most important ones from a staff perspective. I don't know if it's from the applicant's perspective, but it'll be one of the things that we'll be looking to work with them on to provide some clarity for.
Because I really, I mean, I'm with Jesse. There's a certain process that we use for these kinds of things. And the way you explained it to me on the phone was, I said, well, why don't they just combine the lots and then just deal with it as if it were one lot? And you say that there's a prohibition about.
Well, the problem.
They're doing that because you have the right of way going up the middle.
And that's, it would be much easier.
Couldn't we just change that? I mean, whose rule is that, that we can't just combine the lots?
Well, they're simply not contiguous, so that.
That goes.
It can be done through a planned development, but that's a very long process.
It is contiguous because they have that other building in the middle. Don't they own that also?
No, no, the three parcels are not contiguous because there is a road bisecting them. Now, we look at, we can look at projects for contiguousness for zoning purposes, and we aggregate density and things like that. But as far as if you had your house and you bought the lot next to you, if there was a road going through that, no property appraiser or anyone else is going to recognize that you own the other road, the other side of that road, as one parcel. And that's the issue. We would have to change a significant amount of our code, which talks about lots and coverage and those issues.
And before we have ideas that that'd be a good idea, there's. And before we have ideas that that'd be a good idea, there's a reason why we have it this way.
I know, it's a little weird, but so you answered my question. My second question is, the kinds of things that I would be interested to writing in that kind of, have you write into that, that the developer's agreement would be the things that would come out of a plan development? So could we put all the things you would want in a plan development in the developer's agreement?
As a general question, the answer is it's possible. I don't know if it's probable that you would want to put everything that's in there, mainly because a plan development is a brand-new zoning district. In this particular case, they have a zoning district, not looking to change that district. So you wouldn't need to put every regulation down like you would as if you were creating a new district itself. So really, what you would be looking for to address any of the issues that would be outside of that designation or that would apply to these properties in particular that wouldn't necessarily apply to other properties of the zoning designation.
Okay. And just correct me if I'm wrong, but because they want to move the open space from the eastern portion to the western portion, that would allow them to have more buildable space in the eastern portion. Isn't that correct?
Well, actually, the reverse. So the property on the east is where your staff is recommending they preserve more area and move all of the open space to, which would allow the property that's next to us right out this window to have additional square footage there. Because they would not necessarily need to provide that native preservation on this property. They'd be providing on the property that is adjacent to Spanish Wells Boulevard.
How does Spanish Wells play into this as a community in any way, shape, or form?
No, sir, it's not part of the association.
They're not going to have any. Well, because I thought you were saying there was going to be new ways ins and outs.
But the reason, irrespective of whether it goes east to west or east or west to east, they're moving the open space from one undeveloped property to another. And the receiving lot that gets the open space will have less development on it. So they must need extra development on the lot from which they're taking the open space. Is that correct?
The discussions that we have had have involved what would happen if the property was just developed with its current zoning without any agreement or things in place? What would happen if it was developed as a plan development? And what would happen under this developer's agreement? These properties can be developed today based upon their current zoning. They would need to come in to file development orders and building permits. What we have worked with the applicant on and what we're, the things that we would be looking to would be to take the requirement for open space in the property that's right next to us and allow that open space to be located on that eastern parcel. So that way, what you would have is a larger preserve on a portion that the city's environmentalists feel is much more important to preserve than the property that's right next to us. So you squeeze the balloon a little bit where the open space is not required here, but then you'd be providing the same amount on another parcel.
And the reason why they're willing to do that is because they're going to get a higher square footage in the.
No.
No, ma'am.
They said it right here.
Well, they, they.
They can, that square footage is not a new request.
This green sheet, it says it right here.
It's shifting it from one to the other. It's not, they're not getting more.
The green sheet does not identify that that is square footage that they're not entitled to. The green sheet is from what we have discussed with them, what they would like to build in terms of square footage.
This is an example of why this is a very precarious process that we're going through. Because there's nothing clear in anything that's here.
Well, and this is really just to have staff start the negotiations with them. So I mean, we're not saying, yes, we're going to let you do this. We're saying staff can talk to them, hammer out what, you know, it's going to look like, and then it comes back to us to vote on.
This is a situation where you have, you have an applicant that has certain needs for this property. You also have regulations and the city staff is looking to have certain things in place that are a little bit different than we would normally enforce. This allows us to hopefully let everyone get what they're looking for. I make no guarantees on it because we haven't even started the process of it. But it does at least provide the opportunity for that to happen. This will be brought back to you in whatever form it happens to be. And at that point, if it doesn't look good and it's not clear, it shouldn't be approved.
What other avenues, I mean, why can't they just do the plan development?
There is nothing that prevents them from doing it. There was a concern in terms of the amount of time it would take and the applicant's business strategy when they wanted to unify their location. But that is more of a business concern, not a City of Benita Springs concern.
Why can't we just expedite that process?
Let me, let me clarify a couple of things. And I, reading the green sheet again, I understand what your, what your concern is. It says they need an additional 127,000 square feet. What it doesn't say is their plans to develop more buildings on their sites, they could still build 127,000. What we're talking about is moving the structures around in a more conducive and efficient way. Very similar to what's probably going to happen with the Bamboo property. You're going to enter into a development agreement with that developer so you get the product you want. In this situation, the developer agreement process is more efficient for moving, not changes of uses, not changes of entitlements. It's not like they're going to get a big boon in density transfers or something like that. It's about saying, if I can put all my open space on this one parcel instead of building it on two parcels, I can more efficiently use the land and there are benefits to you with interconnections and things like that. What the plan development process would do is the plan development process is for changing the entitlements or changing other criteria in your development standards. We don't need to change a whole list of criteria. There are no new uses, we don't need to change setbacks. The only thing we'd be talking about here is the open space in one lot versus having it provided for in three different lots. And so to go through the process of the plan development, which the only real change is going to be at the end, there'll be a master concept plan that has a different drawn-around number, area for open space. That's the only change you would provide. That's a long process to do, essentially what amounts to a collection of restrictions and easements, saying you're going to do this and in exchange, you're not going to build there, you're going to build it all over here, what you could build there.
And what I've tried to do is at least outline the talking points as I understand them. We haven't really started this yet, so there may be some things that come up that I have not brought up to any of you, so.
I thought that you mentioned to me, and maybe I misunderstood, that if we got into this deal, that it would guarantee the preservation portion of, component of this development moving forward?
What, what I.
Environmentally.
What I have said was, one of the main concerns that we have looked at on this property, at least from our perspective, was some of the environmental concerns. Those are our concerns, and those will be things that we will be looking for. Obviously, you have a property owner that's willing to go through this. I'm sure that they have some design perspectives that they want to try to incorporate into this as well. The whole purpose of this process is to figure out what those are and to see if everybody's copacetic and if we can come to a situation where everybody's getting what they want. If we don't, there is, there is nothing that obligates you to approve an agreement that you're not comfortable with. Unfortunately, right now, when we get into this, do we have the authority to do this? It really leaves the discussion lacking because there isn't a document to pick apart. There isn't something to really go in and dig your teeth into. It's basically, do you want to start negotiating with the property owner or not? And I know that leaves a lot of ambiguity. I understand. But that's, that's why I'm saying that when we come in on the tail end of this process, whatever this process takes in terms of turns and twists, you will come back and you will have the opportunity to not only look at that document, but have negotiations on that document. And if you don't feel comfortable with it, I would not recommend approval for it. So we've asked if this go forward simply because I think that there's a lot of what the property owner is looking to do that matches up with the city's, the city's goals. I think that there's a few areas where this property is unique and has features that don't exist on a lot of other properties that.
Goodbye.
That would allow us to address those, those unique features through this. It's not the only way to do it. Like I said, there's a plan development process, but that doesn't necessarily match up with the property owner's business goals. So.
Is there a risk too, if they, I'm sorry, is there a risk if we decided not to do this, that they decide to sell it and somebody else does it under, with a worse deal under the current zoning that's there?
Well, they don't even have to sell it. The current property owner could develop with what's there today. So there is no, there's no requirement for there to be a rezoning or an agreement in place for the property to be developed. This, this developer's agreement simply allows us the opportunity to have a discussion with the property owner so everybody's goals can get addressed and we can provide some clarity prior to permit applications being submitted.
I don't see a downside to doing this because we get it back to approve. Actually, if it works successfully, it may, may be used on some other similar situation.
The city has used the developer's agreements in the past. It's been a very rare occurrence, but this would not be the first one that we have entered into.
I would, I mean, the way it's written out and the environmental aspects to it, the idea that you have a concentration of open space makes sense to me. But what we don't see is anything about the development. So when we get back to development, I want to see something that's more concrete than we want to put 127,000 square feet of office space in there.
And what I think you're going to see is when, when the developer starts designing the site, there are going to be some constraints because we would be asking for some things and therefore to accommodate that, they would need to ask us for some accommodation for their design and to accommodate what they would normally be able to build had we not started to horse trade. I think that's perfectly natural and to be honest, in the general discussions that we've had so far, there really hasn't been anything that's concerned me. Now, those haven't been detailed and there have been looking around specific plans, but.
Because there's been a lot of criticism from the zoning board about having bubble plans.
Correct.
So this is not even a bubble plan.
Well, it's not a bubble plan, but remember, those applications that the zoning board sees are those that require a zoning application to be approved before construction. This is a property that does not need to make those requests. So because of that, there's, there's a very limited number of options that we have in order to address some unique characteristics of the property and on both sides of the fence, from our perspective and from the property owner's perspective.
I make a motion that we follow your recommendations and.
I second.
Approve the process.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purden.
Mayor.
Me.
Laura.
Councilwoman Carr.
There you go.
Yes.
No, that's all right. Yes.
Mr. You do have the property owner here just.
Sure. No, absolutely. You've been approved. Do you have any, do you have anything to say that might help, better than a 7-0 vote?
I just want to say this, we have an existing business owner who wants to expand the business and bring jobs to the city, increase that volume. The staff, it's not the open space, it's the rare and unique habitat that you see when you look to the east on your parking lot. Some people like it, some people don't. They like it. Mike Kirby's been out and identified the spot that they want.
What are you going to do with the cats?
It's not what we would have, it's not what we would do in designing a site normally. We're willing to work to accommodate them. We're here because I don't think any of you have done a development agreement, although the city has, out in sessions one, two, and three. So we're here to kind of let you know we want to do this and make sure we don't spend your staff time going down the path and going after what we want. So thank you, thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening. Thanks so much.
And it's, a lot of it's about being expeditious and doing it. So we were talking earlier about trying to get some of the CIP stuff done to stimulate the economy. He wants to build in the city, bring in more jobs, you know, he's ready to go, so.
The only concern I have is because once we do this, if they don't execute, then where are we?
Nowhere.
I mean, that's, that's always a concern.
No, it only applies to that property, so.
Yeah, but still.
I guess not worse, because it's nothing really.
It's still the same issue.
How many jobs is it?
I don't recall how many jobs it was, but right now, he's having to rent properties to house. So he needs to bring everybody all on the same campus and add more jobs, so.
This is Benecard, right?
Benecard, yeah.
I mean, it's a wonderful building. If they make two more like that, you know, we should be happy there.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to public comment. Are there members of the public here that would like to speak? All right, welcome back, councilwoman.
Yeah, forgive me, I was having a asthma attack when I was talking to you before, so.
No, that's okay.
Good idea about the distinguished public service award. I would award it to this guy. This is my favorite top. This is Lieutenant David Pisecki, and he was on our first Benita Springs CPU team. And he's back, he's back.
Welcome back.
We're very glad to have him.
Nice to see you.
Really, he's great, he loves Benita, he'd be here in a second, you know? So anyhow.
And that name matches like Bogleoli and Marcino and, you know.
Yeah, but.
Little theme here.
You can call him Pi, okay? Name is good, too. Yeah, well, it's great to have you back in town, Dave. Oh, yeah, okay, so my thoughts just real quickly for you, Jesse and council, or mayor for Jesse and council. This distinguished public service award, we already had something like that. And Arlene might remember, we had a process and everything called Hometown Hero. So.
Kind of like that. I kind of got the idea.
Yeah, you can adopt that. The VFW and the American Legion do awards for firefighters and police officers, sheriff's department personnel, paramedics. We get volunteer of the year award out of the county, out of the Chamber of Commerce, small business award. So anyhow, those happen in other areas, but it's a great idea and people should be recognized for what they do. There was some guy that, that just rescued a worker out of a canal in town. A landscaper got caught under his lawnmower, and I was like, that's definitely one of them. You know, extraordinary guy. He was in his 80s, jumped right in the canal and helped that man out.
He was like 68, too. He was an older guy. He was definitely an older guy, wasn't a young guy.
Yeah, no.
He saved like a 22-year-old kid.
But I think he was in his 80s, wasn't he in his 80s? Yeah, that was amazing. 68's not old. Remember that?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. It's 68's new 50. Okay, I want to get back to my item that I brought for you first because I was having a little asthma attack. So it was past November of 2018, okay? But it's not going to be enacted until January 1st, well, December 31st, 2022. That's four years. Here's a citizens initiative that overwhelmingly passed, covers state, county, municipal, judicial, public officers. And it's going to be four years before it's enacted. And I think we, as a very ethical team here in Benita Springs, should enact it as well. So again, I ask you to do that. I thank you for your time and I thank you for having an open meeting once again. Please take care of the technology because you get a delay. We couldn't hear it because the one that's out in the hallway, it has no sound on it and the captioning says things you're not saying. And then the one up in the parking lot is like on a different delay than the one on your live stream. Because I was trying to listen to you on my phone, but it was different than what you were saying. Anyhow, get my point. I'm glad you're here. If no one here, if council decides not to adopt this and do this, I will go to a citizens petition initiative. I can do that, you know, it's not too much. But it's really important for us. So God bless you all, stay healthy, stay well. Thanks for all the hard work that you're doing. This COVID thing has got us in a tizzy here. You know, Al came down here and spoke to you about it. Glad to see, you know, if somebody wants to keep moving forward next door. I hope you do a shared parking lot. The city tried to buy that property, maybe about 10 years ago, when the Collier family owned it, and they said no because, you know, we have parking problems back when you can't really get public here to be with you when all the consultants are in, when the economy's really great, there's lots of consultants around and you really can't get the parking. So I hope you can work something out with them for that. As far as Imperial, I know is landing, I don't know when it become a crossing. We had a big drag-out fight on that. We almost got a couple of us recalled from their election. We had some change in votes, we had a compromise. I was a swing vote on that. And what we did was, we said, okay, all right, we're going to develop this, fine, but have a 50-foot buffer.
And I want to hear your comments, but you're at five minutes right now.
Oh, God bless. 50-foot buff, thank you very much, mayor. This is just a little historical for you. 50-foot buffer on either side of the, of the river. And Pat McCourt goes, make it 100 feet. I said, Pat, you'll never get anything developed if you do that. He goes, well, that's a point. I said, well, no, Pat, I mean, we need something there downtown. So 50 feet on either side of the river. And the depiction here, the idea was to like have jazz on the green idea was to like have jazz on the green or have green space along the river, not canyonize it and cement it and seawall it and all that. So the depiction that we've seen in a couple iterations of what's downtown Benita Development, uh, Bamu, Imperial Landing, Imperial Crossing, doesn't fit what the zoning is, okay? So don't get that in your head. When, the first time that Carl came up and showed me this depiction of what, we would go out for an RFQ, I just can't do that. We had, we, I mean, we had a big drag-out. People were on the phone. Arlene was here, she might remember. Um, it was bad and we came to this compromise. So I hope that you'll respect council votes from several councils on this issue about keeping that 50-foot buffer on either side. Keep it green space. You'll still have plenty of room to do a nice development. And I thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, thanks, Meg. Seeing none, we're going to move along. Uh, city attorneys items.
I've got one item for you tonight, council. Uh, last week, the governor's executive order 20-112 opened up restaurants and retail locations. In the restaurant area, the indoor capacity is now increased, are up to 25% of their capacity can be held indoors. There was an outdoor preference and he was outlined by the governor in his, in his presentation on this item. He did not give any details of how that would go forward and there was no override of local zoning regulations. So the local communities throughout southwest Florida have all started to implement either through various policies, executive orders, or resolutions as you, as you have tonight for you. Regulations that allow outdoor seating at restaurants to proceed without permits. Uh, what I prepared for you is, is based off of the Lee County item with a few tweaks for our own reference. Uh, includes up to 2,000 square feet of outdoor space can be utilized. Uh, they can, they can occupy parking lots. They have to get any fire issues addressed. ADA issues will have to be addressed, but it is a no permit process. We're simply asking that if these rules are followed, restaurants can move forward and have outdoor seating. We simply ask that they register with the city and give us a description of what they're doing so that for code enforcement purposes and other reasons, we know they're there. We can do inspections and we have the ability to send updates to them should the rules change. Um, I've developed this as a 45-day order, which would mean that next month I would ask for either extension of it or revisions to accommodate whatever steps the health officials in the state are providing. Um, it's going to be fairly uniform. This exact model is being used, or very similar in the Cape. Uh, I said Lee County, Charlotte County. A couple more communities are adopting similar items. It's, um, one of the big questions that came up recently is STERO did up to 3,000 square feet. We have no objection if you want to match that. Um, 2,000 is a little bit more than Sanibel is at 1,800 square feet, but we were just matching the county on this.
Could we increase the days after the order, um, you know, like since it's so fluid and folks are renting and rentals are usually 30 days? So if something changes and we say, okay, no more, you know, you can do inside seating, uh, your capacity is shut down, can we at least give them the opportunity not to lose again more money that they paid for 30 days and they have to return it in four days? You know, we're telling them, you cease and desist in, you know, 10 days and that could...
All right. Uh, so if, I have, I have no objections to that.
It's for existing restaurants, though. What rental...
Well, because they...
Rental equipment, uh, the tables.
Outside, you know, in the tents and the whole deal. I mean, to do that and then on a, you know, 10 days?
So this is for, I'm sorry. Um, now I, I didn't understand what you're saying, but I do. So at, what, what, how's it written? 45 days plus it's, if it changes of order?
This order basically suspends your outdoor permitting requirements. You can still get an outdoor permit if you wish to make this a permanent situation for 45 days. Anyone can come into compliance. Think of it as a safe harbor. If you follow these rules, you can go out today and start and stop, start operating. I've done it on a 45-day reoccurrence so that you would absolutely have one council meeting during that window where you could make adjustments, extend it, make other changes as necessary. And at some point, since we don't know what the, the path of this is going to be, we'll be wanting to phase this out. And so I didn't want to make this a, a long-term issue. A lot of, a lot of changes that were occurred by, that made by code back during the, the last financial crisis then became semi-permanent. We want to make sure that everyone understands that this is a temporary relief issue and ultimately your parking will have to be a parking lot at some point when capacity increases. At the same time, we talked about the workshop. It may be a market consideration that even after we've received 100% occupancy allowed by law, there may be, you know, vendors and restaurants who wish to keep it in a more expanded capacity for customer customers.
Because maybe people aren't willing to go inside, but they'll sit outside until they build the confidence. So again, it doesn't sort of smack the retailer again, you know?
And one, one correction I'll, I'll note because I see the, the draft is online. Uh, paragraph 15, it, it says this order does create additional property rights. No, there's the actual signed ver, final version has a, does not create additional property rights. That's, that's really what we were trying to, it was an omission, not a typo.
And I'm going to point out something else to you in the addendum. This, you have COVID-10 there, not COVID-19.
That one's a lot worse than that.
That was an earlier one. That was, John will, John can back me up that I wrote this at like 12:30 at night, so.
Yeah, no. Um, council, what thoughts? Discussion, Jessie?
I would say I've read about four different ordinances and you have a pretty good hodgepodge, Rudy.
I took the best from everyone.
You did. You took the best parts of a lot of different ones. So, I mean, I think it's fairly comprehensive. It doesn't leave a lot for interpretation. As long as the fire department, you know, a, and I'm sure they will carry through on the no cost permitting and expedites it. I think it's a, a good way forward. I'm happy with your work.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree. Do you want to vote? Need to vote?
So mayor, just, I did want to add that staff has been direct contact with Chief DeWitt and, uh, that email address will help us coordinate with the fire department so we can give education and counseling with our code officers on egress issues, fire issues. And he is going to work with us on tent permits as well.
Just for curiosity purpose, but we're going to be doing a, a list so everybody who decides to do it has to email the city, right? What are we going to be, what are we doing with that list after we have it? Is it just so we know or are we actually doing
So it, so they'll register, they'll give us a description of what they're, what they're intending to do and then we can send out updates for changes. I mean, that, and really, we just want to know where they are and eventually if we get to a point where we can send our building inspectors out to make sure that, for instance, ADA, you know, we're saying comply with the ADA. We don't necessarily think that every restaurateur knows the rules by heart. So there'll be a part process where we will be checking on just to make sure things are okay.
And we're treating it as an education process. It's not a...
So if there are any difficulties, how do you deal with that?
If, well, so what I put into this resolution is that they will have to adhere to any directives they get from either code enforcement or from John's staff. And if they don't, they could be subject to revocation.
As well as fire.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Sounds good.
Derek, do you want to vote or are you?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carrumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon? Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Derek, anything else?
Um, yes, two things. One, I didn't see any objection. I'm going to change it to 30 days on, after it expires for the, because of the rental issue. Um, I have been discussing with staff and I had a conversation earlier with Larry Kurlander and the zoning board. I would like to move forward, trying to schedule, um, virtual meetings for the zoning board and probably to the planning commission. You know, the, the membership on those boards are, are, you know, already restricted by the, the COVID-19 situation and shouldn't be tra, going out. I believe I can set up a process that would allow quasi-judicial items to still proceed in a, in a fair manner. So I'm going to start working on those for your next meeting. I'll have, I'll have an order prepared for you along the lines of today's to allow that process to proceed.
Get that wrong on me, Fred.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Thank you very much. Um, we are going to, uh, move to city managers items. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the three items there, trying to pick one out. We'll just let you take them in order, Arlene. How's that?
The first item, we just for review this evening, not for decision-making purposes, is we wanted to remind you of the, since our previous election, the list of committee assignments for council members. Uh, if you'd like, you take a look at this if your interests change. We have two new council members who have, will have expressed interest in some of the committees. I did want to clarify, Laura Carr did mention that she is officially not the liaison to veterans, but that she's a substitute as well. So, and that's something that Derek and I have talked about. If there's members who can work at substitutions for those as well, for interested multiple committees. But we would be hoping for the next, uh, meeting to have this before you for decision-making on...
Oh, and then I am on the MPO.
Yes.
As an alternate as well, yes.
And just one question I have, where the outreach committee, Jessie was the chairman and I was the liaison, what, what would that look like?
Well, he, he's, uh...
Now that he's been...
He's been moving, but elevated up.
How's it, what's that look like?
I don't, it's, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it up to, uh, Councilman Pardon to see if he wants to, uh, slum it down and go back to the advisory boards. But now, the, the issue about, the issue about if there was more than one member who wanted to be on a board as a liaison, then we would have to advertise those as, you know, basically council meetings. And so it becomes a step, what, what Councilwoman Carr is doing on the two boards, she's, she is the liaison. She's, she, she sits in when, um, so she's not the liaison, she's the alternate. So in a situation where Mr. Mayor, you wouldn't be there at the outreach, um, then councilperson Pardon could show up if he was the alternate.
Only if you give me permission.
I was just going to say, you got, you got, you got a mayor who's the, the, right, who invented the committee with the help of, you know, with the support of the council, a, a chairman that got elected to council. So boy, I don't know. I don't know who gets to stay on the committee.
That's what we're going to decide this, this evening. That's for the next meeting.
For the next meeting. Two weeks of contemplation.
You can't, you...
And I lobbied you guys for the committee because remember initially it didn't pass.
Did you just email the U or something?
Email us and we can have that provided to you of your interest at the next meeting, but also in the past, you all have gone through each of them and discussed who would, who would like to take on each committee. So you, you've kind of gone down the list and, and sometimes it shifted from existing committees you have. So, um, but if you'd like to email us, we'll, we'll put your email request with the green sheet for next time if you'd like that.
But a question that I would have, let me just say, like if, say Jessie were to become the advisor to the outreach committee, could I attend the meetings and not say boo? Or would that, and I know the committee would be tempted to want to ask me things and...
If it's an occasional issue, we'll, we'll, we'll work it out. Just let us know ahead of time so that we...
No, I mean, and it's one of these things. We, we all love our committees. I want full throttle ahead, but we're going to have to figure that out.
My, my recommendation is because you, you can't, ultimately who's going to decide who's going to be the liaison is, is the full council, um, is, you know, without daisy chaining or trying to lobby the other members, I suggest you prepare speeches to...
All right, so we're going to have to vote. It's going to come to a vote.
In all honesty, how could you go to a meeting and not say anything?
Very valid point and very valid point. So I guess Jessie's just going to have to decide.
Oh, man, that's great. That was the, that was worth the meeting.
Yeah, right there. Absolutely.
If you told us you were going to attend one, we would advertise it as a meeting of the council because more than two members would be in the meeting.
We just both, I mean, not that we all don't love our committees, but I mean, we both love that committee with every ounce of our heart and, you know, anyway, we'll, we'll get there. We'll figure it out.
We'll circle back. Horse trading. Uh, can I, logistically, as the new guy, ask you a question? Maybe Chris wonders the same thing. So I sent the committees and stuff that I would like, but I wasn't sure, logistically, do we reshuffle the deck every time there's a new council? And maybe, or, or is it you're stuck with whoever you, seat you took? Because I mean, DeWitt was on like the, I should, bottom line, if there's other ones that you might want procedurally and historically as a council, how have we dealt with that?
Arlene said, said it to her. I just asked her the same question.
Yes.
Maybe I...
There hasn't been, there isn't a...
No, there, there isn't a procedure or, so, so at the time, for example, we've had, we've had other council members who were seating on boards for, was the liaison to historic preservation. And then when Laura Carr came, he, he offered it to Laura Carr for her interest. So they do shuffle along the, the, what the desire of the council is for each of them.
And I was just going to say, and it's apples to oranges, but I do remember when I came on in 2012, and nothing against the council that was with me at that time, I was the brand new and the only one. I took what was ever left over, but I'm not saying we have to implement that, but they went through, figured out what they...
Look at Chris's face. That's hard to feel.
No, I know, but what was ever was left is what I got. So, but I'm not saying we have to do that.
That's what we did with Fred. Remember, he wasn't here?
In 2012?
He wasn't here the day that we did this and everything nobody wanted we gave to him.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, Fred, that's true. Fred, that's right. We did that. It was great. Why, why do we have an open process this way and just...
We can just put all our names in a hat, put it, throw them in the middle and we all draw our own.
I'll trade you one outreach committee for...
Like baseball trading.
Right, trading cards. We'll get through it, team. I know we will.
It's not that controversial.
No. Other than outreach, you know, we'll see. Arlene, what is your next item?
My next item is I just wanted to provide as, as your staff is continuing our preparation for the budget process. And at the next meeting, we will have, uh, the calendar as well, but also in light of COVID-19, we wanted to remind, and we have two new council members as well, this is the adopted strategic priorities, uh, not for this meeting, but we wanted to know if there was any thoughts of any shifting or new items that you wanted to provide into the strategic, strategic priorities because of COVID-19, you know, regarding economic development. Um, you know, we just wanted to provide that opportunity for you all to revisit that. And we would bring that up again at the next meeting if you'd like to add a priority to that effect or reshuffle any of those.
I do think we have to do, I think we need to have something having to do with COVID-19, you know, just mitigate the effects that economic, and I don't know what we need to do.
If you like, we'll...
For the care or the, or the, or the, um, the pressure that we're going to see on our businesses. I mean, I think we need to do something there.
We can try to draft something for you for the next meeting and then you all can tweak it in any way you, uh, prefer.
Don't bring us a new tax, Arlene. Said, don't bring us a new tax, Arlene.
What did you say?
Said, don't bring us a new tax, Arlene.
Oh, she doesn't like that.
I'm joking with her. I'm joking. I'm joking.
So we'll bring that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, okay, wonderful. Thanks, Arlene.
Um, the last thing I want to do is go over a couple of updates with COVID-19. I won't go through all the medical statistics. I just wanted to give an update on the zip codes as well as the total. So, um, as of today, um, there are 17 cases in zip code 34134. There are 79 cases in zip code 34135, but the overall total for Benita Springs is 96. I do have the rest of the statistics. If you need any of those, I have those available. But I also wanted to go over just a few housekeeping items. Uh, just as a reminder, all of the parks have been reopened with social distancing, uh, conditions except for the athletic fields. And we're consistent with, um, with that call as Lee County. Lee County, uh, also, um, we want to be consistent with our special event permits as well. As of right now, special events are suspended till May 14th. Um, staff would look to have that through the end of May unless we go into a next phase of, um, of, of recovery as to the governor because of social distancing for the special events. Um, you also had previously been told that we, we are suspending the Memorial Day services this year. Um, Laura's already working with her team to see what the future looks like for 4th of July, so we'll continue to bring you updates on that as well. Um, we do also want to express that we've worked out the ability to keep as limited number of folks in this room as possible this evening. But it's been mentioned to me by a couple of council members, interest in utilizing the Presbyterian Church, which does have a larger venue space. They also have more meeting spaces available. Um, our Laura Taylor and her team have gone over there with Antonio. There is an ability to livestream from there and to have in conference rooms continued livestreaming for that as well. Um, if it's the pleasure, if it's the pleasure of the council, we could coordinate with the church to have our next meeting on the 20th there. Um, they would ask for a, um, a fee for their IT folks, which is $100 for the meeting space. And that's, but that's solely up to the council if you'd like us to, to, to look at that allocation. Uh, with the restrictions that we have here, as you can see, um, we're nine in here right now. That's why we have the podium there and you have the staff in the, um, in the area right here, so.
I, I think it would be a good idea, you know?
So we could have a, a more normal transaction so that...
They have a big parking lot.
Big parking lot, lot of space.
And, and they have already identified seats, uh, in the auditorium with proper social distancing. And what Derek has told me is the new caveat to the 10 or fewer is if the space permits and you have a lot, much larger space there. The space does not permit for more folks in here to be able to accommodate six feet in between you.
Counsel, is everybody okay with that? Next meeting over at the church?
Worth the try.
Yeah, yeah. We'll give it a shot. Okay, great.
If we still have...
If you still have the restrictions at this time.
Right, true. Very true. Good point. Good point. Exactly. Good point, exactly. Optimism.
It does look, though, that we're, even if they lift them, that they're still going to have the recommendation for people over 60 or 65. So we're still going to have to provide that for the council because a few of us are over 60.
And I just wanted to bring up, you said, the special events in the park. I think, you know, a lot of people have said outside is really the best place to be, in the sun and the fresh air, to look at possibly either, you know, the Springs, the church on Sundays, or even, you know, some kind of the music, the different bands that play there. There is a lot of area, as long as the crowd's not too big, people could be socially distant out there. And I guess as long as the performers aren't too close up on the bandshell. But I, you know, people are looking for things to do. I think if we can give them some kind of outdoor activity that can be safely done, might be a good idea. So when we're looking at extending that from the 14th beyond, you know, if there's a possibility of being able to bring some things back in, I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah, this time we were just saying till the end of May, and I think you actually, currently there are an additional permits request through the end of May to readdress it. But we don't have any other, but Benita concert bands or any other applications through the end of May. Most of them were completed, would have been done in April.
How is that outdoor church that's held there? What are they doing?
So they don't actually have an official permit with the city. They utilize the open space of the park, and they had coordinated with the mayor that during the closure of the park that they weren't going to utilize the park during that time.
They're virtual. I think they're doing it from their home virtually for now.
I was just saying, that would be an ideal group to try to do a group activity because I think they would comply.
Pastor Russ Winn and his group, yes.
Yeah, if we'd want to reach out, you know, if they think that they can do it safely and they want to try, I think it would be a good idea.
You want to call him, Arlene? We'll call Pastor Winn this week.
Just that we do have to, we do not open the parks for, right now, they are not open for actual activities. It's for walking, exercising.
True.
So, so we just have to work through that.
And we're still limited to what, 10 or 15? What's that?
We are limited to 10.
So we have to wait until the next phase?
We have to wait until Phase 2.
Phase 2, that's right. Okay. Great, Arlene, anything else?
That's all I had for this evening.
Wonderful, thank you. Mayor and councilmember reports. Fred, we'll start with you.
I don't really have anything.
Okay, great, thanks. Mike?
No, mainly I wanted to bring up the park, but...
Okay, great, thanks. Chris?
Nope, don't have anything.
Okay, Laura?
Nope. God bless. Be strong, Benita.
Thank you. Jesse?
Just real quick, I, I'm not asking that we have any action on it, but I just, to get in your minds the thought process. If Phase 2 does not include short-term rentals, I don't know if we would even have the autonomy as a city. But, I mean, just looking at logistically how the virus works, the fact that people could be in hotels but not be in a home separated from everybody, logically, it doesn't flow to me. I got a couple of emails on it. I'm not sure if you guys might have as well. But I don't even know if we have the authority, but I just want you guys to be thinking about if short-term rentals are not included in Phase 2, a way that we could figure out, or if we have the ability to do it, just from the sense that it's not logical, honestly. From that in a hotel, it's not logical.
Right, but it's not logical that salons and cosmopolitans...
I'm not arguing that. I'm saying let's make it easier for the, for people to rent their houses and things like that.
Easier for hairdressers to go back to work.
And I think there are a couple of loopholes in there. I think if there's somebody coming into the area to help out with the COVID issue, they can rent out a house, or somebody that's trying to be distant from other members of the household, you can rent, do a short-term vacation.
Me, it's a big, A, it's a big part of the economy. It's private property, right? And additionally, just from a logistical standpoint, to have people huddled in a hotel and be, and think that that's okay, but say, you can't go to a house on two and a half acres with your family, and that isn't okay. I mean, it just, for me, things that logically don't flow, I don't like them. So if there's a way that we can do something at a city level if it's not included in Phase 2, think about that.
Thank you. Amy?
Well, you may be reporting on the same thing because we got that email from captains of Clean, what is it? Clean Water, and I was interested in what they were concerned about. And I emailed Kevin Ruane, and he shared a response to it. And what I'm talking about is that there is a bill where the ability to direct water, the scheme that is used to direct water out of the Ever, the, what is that called?
Lake O.
Lake O reservoirs is, is being distorted. And he said, I'm going to share this with you. I can't summarize it because it's like...
Yeah, no, please. You want to read it?
Well, what he's saying is basically, the issue is that they're trying to apply what's called the savings clause to the LOSOM and using the Water Supply and Environment Lake Regulation Schedule as the base condition. So what they're saying is that, that they want to revert back to what happened a few years ago before this agreement that we now have with the Army Corps of Engineers. And they're concerned that they're going to pass this amendment, and they're going to ask for our activism. Let me, let me send you this thing.
Sure.
And it's a, and he wants us to help. We might have to send letters to our, you know, how we usually do. But anyway, it's something to be aware of because it affected us. Now, the Army Corps of Engineers has set water to us when we're dry, and so that the lake is lower, and we didn't have that destructive time that they usually do now right before the hurricane season. But this, what they're trying to do now will make it impossible for them to make those adjustments that they had in the past. We already have an agreement, but somebody, some entity, for some, they say it's Big Sugar, is trying to adjust it so that they get more water to the agricultural, and then they still can bring the water up. That's basically the gist of it. But let me give it to you, and then if, at our next meeting, we could...
What amendment is it?
Excuse me?
Is there an amendment that you mentioned?
Let me, we all got the email from the captains of Clean Water and Congressman, we all got them, I'm sure.
Brian Mast, yeah, I saw, I saw it today, but I didn't dive into it, so.
I followed up on it because I was concerned about, first of all, I didn't, I didn't know if captains of Clean Water, or that they were on, on top of this situation, that they're not 100% reliable, I'm sorry. But they are mostly reliable, but I always want to do my own research, so that's why I went to Kevin.
Trust, but verify.
Yes, I was doing, I was doing trusted, and anyway, and he was very kind to get this back. He said, were you on the mayor's?
I, no, I was not on today's call. First one I missed in a month and a half.
See, I needed your information, and I got it myself.
There you go.
So anyway, but I think we're going to, we should do something.
Yes, I agree. Absolutely.
And he said he's going to come out with some suggestions for how we could help. But they're very concerned about it, and if anybody's been out on the water, I can see it right in our ponds that are thinking, it's so clean now. I can't believe how clear the water is, you know?
I'd love to see the bill because, I mean, in general, Kevin Ruane has great water policy, so I tend to, and what you're saying makes sense. I just would like to see the whole thing before we do a lot of it, honestly.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we'll bring it back for the next meeting and dive into it.
And there's, and if, and if you go, I just sent the link to Arlene because I thought she would be using it. There's a whole discussion with Congressman Mast about his concern about it. And they also, they also write about what exactly they're saying. And once I read that, I said, yeah, there's something to this. I felt like there was. And anyway, they want us to make sure that this is not passed. And I know we're interested in it.
I wonder what Carol's thoughts are on it, too.
Excuse me?
I wonder what Carol's thoughts might be on it, too.
Carol?
Carol Green, our lobbyist, I think is...
Oh, oh, yeah.
And she gave an update.
Is it just Tally? Or is it just Tally?
Tally, Tally. Oh, is she only Tally?
No, this is federal. I think, well, I was thinking we should write to Francis Rooney because he, I'm sure, I thought about calling him and stuff, but anyway, let me give you the information. I'll...
And I'll get on tomorrow's mayor's call, and, yeah, we'll...
And ask him what he's talking about, and I'll send you this. I'll just forward, can I forward Kevin Ruane's to them? His response to me?
I think you can forward, but just say, please do not respond.
Okay, all right.
Great. Thank you, Amy, for that very much. No, that's fantastic. You know, we had, we had a discussion here, and we're all battling, you know, a lot, a lot of fear in our community, and we're looking at medical realities, financial realities, and I know we all will, but it, people are looking to us for leadership, and they're looking for us to lead this city forward, not to gate this city up, chain this city up, and disappear. So we have to keep moving the balls simultaneously down the field in a safe, prudent manner. Florida is more liberal in the sense, if you will. I was on a national call today with some mayors. Other, you know, New York City basically shut down all summer. I mean, they're going, and they're going to cancel all activities. You have Florida, that's reopening. You have other states that are reopening, and some that are somewhere in between, and you've got some, you know, we're dealing here with 80 and 90-degree weather, and you've got snowstorms still going on up north, so you've got weather variables here. But we are seven-strong in a city representing 55,000 people, so we need to move forward in a safe and prudent manner. And I think whether it's on this old 41 or so many other items, let's just keep that in mind. You know, we can't be driven by fear. We need to be driven by reality and forward-thinking. So that's, that's my thought that kind of sums everything up. So with that, looking for an approval of the minutes of April 15th. Okay, and there's a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Great. Public comment. Is there anybody out there left for public comment? Okay, seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.